Call to order this special meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. I will just turn it over to staff.
Well, since I've been gone for four days, I'm going to let the folks that have been here working take the driver's seat, and this is their project anyway, so we'll let them go. Turn it over to Brian and Adam.
Thanks, John. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Appreciate all the work that's gone into directing us and getting to this point in the budget. Today's our budget workshop. This is by no means the final budget, but this is kind of everything we've worked through to get to a recommended phase of the budget that then Council can give us further direction and lead into an adoption meeting in June. And this will be going out for notice of the public hearing in mid-May. So our goal today is to provide City Council with an understanding of what is in the recommended budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, and prioritize the level of services to be included and the taxes and rates needed to fund current and future priorities. Really key here is, you know, we're planning for the future. We're not looking at this in a vacuum of a single year, and we need to think through what the impacts are many years out. So for today, we'll run through just the welcome, a brief kind of overview on our philosophy in developing this budget, some economic conditions, jumping into our governmental funds, try to take a break around 10 o'clock, and then move into the enterprise funds. We will have a discussion on special appropriations. That can shift before or after lunch, depending, you know, where we are in the day, how everyone's feeling, and then reserve the afternoon for any additional discussion and direction. Our goal is to get you out of here, you know, by lunch, but we do have 111 slides, so we'll see how effective we are at moving through that. So some development themes that we've talked through and have been weighing on the development of this budget, our economic conditions. I think, you know, seeing in the news pretty much every day talks of recession, and we'll talk a little bit through that. No being our theme this year. No tax rate increases, no rate increases, except for water and sewer is our direction. Some project prioritization has gone on from a capital projects perspective. We have a new parking fund, and really, this is the year of our four-year budget cycle. Next year is revale, so we're trying to float this year, get to revale, and then come back and do some of the things we've done in the past where we reprioritize big projects, put things on the list for the next four years. Just a quick reminder of Council values, things that we think through when we're creating the budget. These along with the Council focus areas of strong partnerships, numerous amenities, great public services, financial sustainability, economic vitality, and there's one more, but I've forgotten it because I'm just listing them off the top of my head. I think it's strong partnerships. So this was from our fiscal year '21 budget. This was done in February of 2020, so right before the pandemic started, and we were in the building on Allen Street, King &amp; Allen, and we talked through programs and policies for the next four years. And some of those were paying classification study and/or 401K match. Attainable housing was a top priority. SSO prevention ranked very high, and so did stormwater, addressing, you know, stormwater concerns within the city. Other items on there were tree canopy, downtown master planning, ETJ agreements, other revenue options, diversifying revenue, that was specifically general fund tie, portals of entry into the city, water rate equalization. And I think we've done a pretty good job of starting or accomplishing some of these priorities that were set back in 2020 calendar year, fiscal year '21. One thing I do want to highlight here, we were notified, I believe this week, that we just received a grant from the TDA to add a downtown master plan into our comp plan study for $50,000. So just really good news we heard just yesterday. From a projects perspective, these were the narrowed down projects with solar panels on city facilities and stormwater improvements ranking highest, parking solutions, third, and then greenways, Acusa Trail expansion, connections between 7th and 4th Avenue, hands-on capital build-out, Main Street avenues and splash pad. And I think we've done pretty well at starting some of these projects and getting some of these projects underway. The following year, we additionally spoke again about kind of projects and programs and policy priorities. Some things we heard there were the narrowing of King Street, improving US 64, redevelopment of Blue Ridge Mall, affordable housing, again, public safety, Mud Creek water quality, adapting city events to the pandemic, first responder, mental health, sustainability, broadband and park developments. Again, these items, I think, are recurring themes of what we've been working on and what we're trying to include in this upcoming budget as well. All right. So I just want to wake everyone up a little bit with some bright colors. So we're going to play a game, a quiz, for two truths and a lie. And what you'll need is you'll need your phone or some sort of electronic device, so go ahead and get those out, and then we'll load up these questions here. All right. So what we're going to do is, two of these statements are true and one is a lie. What you need to do is go to publicinput.com/i8816, or you can text the code at the bottom of the screen.
Oh, you can text the code?
Yep. And I'll talk through these once y'all are ready, so.
What do we text?
Text 64332.
But what do we put in the text box?
You text that in the text box, 2512-580-8850. So the number to text is 512-580-8850.
Technologically challenged.
And anyone else in the audience is welcome to play too. All right. Generally, y'all got in?
Thank you.
Yeah? Okay. All right. So the three statements here is the MUI drops.
How do I know if I'm in?
Did you text?
I got this back, but how do I respond?
So.
Oh, you just text the number?
Yeah, you text the number, yeah.
You don't text, you just do 1, 2, or 3.
Yep, that's right.
Oh, which one is the lie?
So.
One more, Brian.
Yep.
No.
No?
I texted 64332.
Yeah, did you get a response back? Did you get the phone number right?
That makes a difference. That's my bad.
We're getting there.
Set this up right there.
Yeah, we need a little start, a little fun, wake up a little bit.
Yeah. Students who are watching, they'd be just giggling right now.
You do this to them?
No, no. They like to see it done to us.
Okay.
It's a tech thing, and I'm like, how do I do this thing to do it? And they're just laughing. I'm like, just do this. Oh, okay.
You almost in there, John? Okay. Mayor, you good now?
Yes.
Okay.
So we were, go ahead and do it.
No, wait till I describe a couple of things on here, because I don't know if anyone knows what MUI is, but.
That one I don't recognize.
You could guess, but it's not what you probably think.
I'm betting the I is index.
The I is index, that's correct.
There you go, okay.
You good? Okay. So these ones are all recession-based questions. So two of these statements are true and one is a lie. The first is the MUI, which is the men's underwear index, dropped significantly before a recession. That is an actual index. The second is the lipstick index increases before or during a recession. And the third is the two-year, 10-year yield curve inversion is the best yield curve to monitor for future recessions.
And is that the yield curve on Treasury?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we got five votes in. The MUI is the most popular lie. Uh-oh. Easy there. We will tell you later. Next question. Don't show the results.
So that MUI one is funny, because I've read about that one.
Yeah. So identifying the lie on this one. You okay? I'm unmuted. When I had my Toyota service two weeks ago, there were only four available cars on the lot. New cars on the Toyota lot. Ductile iron water pipe is taking more than six months to be available for projects, public and private, and North Carolina has the fifth highest gas tax in the nation at 36 cents per gallon.
I suppose we're not allowed to look up the third one?
No, not allowed to look up the answers. Not open book.
Is the first one IU? That means, are you the I?
I am the I. Yeah, when I went to Toyota. All right, everyone in. I'm going to click Show Results. We got resplit, ductile iron pipe, gas tax, and then Toyota being the lowest. Only, oh, we got some audience members participating as well.
It's a beautiful pie chart there.
And we'll go one more. All right, last one. So this one is related to the economy. This one, if you read the memo and studied the memo, you would have this answer. So real disposable personal income has been increasing since August of '21. North Carolina housing permits hit a five-year high in March of '22 at 8,504 permits, and retail taxable sales grew by 14.6% as of January 2022.
So I did hear an interesting statistic yesterday. From the National Association of Realtors, there was an article I read, that if we were to continue with development at the current rate, it would take 20 years, this is national, like, across the board, it would take 20 years to produce the amount of homes and apartments that we need now.
Yeah, we're 3 million short.
All right, let's see this one. This one, real disposable personal income has been increasing since August '21 is the majority feels is the lie, and our audience member has tied that at housing permits. I don't know who it is. It could be Blair, or it could be Ken Fitch, I don't know. So jumping ahead, so the lie from question one was the yield curve. There's a lot of discussion on yield curves. Congratulations to those who got it correct. The three-month, 10-year yield curve is actually more reliable at predicting recessions. The two-year, 10-year has been wrong before. And to note, specifically in times of high inflation, the two-year, 10-year will actually drop and invert, and that's actually what we're seeing right now. And if you actually look at, so this is, the red is the three-month, 10-year, and you can see it's actually doing really well while the two-year has been dropping and inverted slightly, and there was a whole lot of news coverage about that, and.
Can I ask a question on that one? That is, so when the Treasury sets those rates, and they're doing it basically on, we have to sell X number of securities, and so they just keep changing the rates to hit their mark. Is that basically when they're changing those rates, why they're changing them?
I don't think I can get deep into that answer. I wish I could.
Because obviously, the demand is changing.
Yeah.
And that's affecting, so if nobody's buying it, they've got to change the rate, or if too many people are buying it, they change the rate.
Yeah, and the Fed has a big impact on this as well. The lie on question number two was NC has the fifth highest gas tax in the nation at 36 cents, we're actually the ninth highest at 36 cents. Just, I thought it was funny, I was getting my Toyota service, and there was only four cars available that were brand new. It was really, I was like, I was there, and I was standing there, and I was like, something feels wrong about this, and I don't know what it is.
Is that the right place?
And then I realized, I was like, oh, there's no cars. I was like, I'm at a car dealership, and there's no cars. Ductile iron pipe is taking six, greater than six months to get for public and private developments. So the takeaway here being supply chain is a serious concern that we should all be aware of. And the takeaway on the previous one, which I'll talk more into, is that no one seems to really have a good gauge on recessions. The men's underwear index is something Alan Greenspan talks about, and it's, you know, if it goes down, we're headed for a recession, so that's what he.
Do you guys understand what that one means? Is that when men don't have money, they quit buying underwear?
Yeah.
They just reuse theirs over and over. And I said, this is sad statement on men.
Right.
Statement on men.
And they'll buy underwear anyway, their wives do.
And then the lipstick index is actually, it does increase. It's a cheap commodity that's easily accessible and provides happiness. It's something that people buy during a recession.
What lipstick are you using?
I don't buy lipstick. And then a lot of people got this right. This one I thought was tricky, but y'all nailed this one. Real disposable income has not been increasing since August of '21. You can see August '21 there on the graph, and we've actually been going down. The big takeaway here is you can really see the impacts of these various stimulus that went into effect and the effect they've had on the economy. And now we're, you know, I'm hoping finding level. What scares me about this is disposable income is still decreasing, and we'll talk more about that as we get further into the presentation. So what's all this mean? There's pros and cons for what we're looking at from an economy going forward. You know, that three-month, 10-year yield curve is positive and improving, that's a good thing. The con is disposable income is decreasing. Our unemployment is really low at 3.9% as of January '22. However, labor availability is still below October 2019 levels. So you've got a variety of things occurring there, from older generations retiring to my generation and younger generations leaving the workforce and doing self-employment. It's a very interesting market from a labor availability standpoint. Hourly earnings grew by $2.48 per hour over 2021, which is, you know, really good. You would think that would be helping that disposable income number. However, inflation is straining affordability, and normal household expenses are becoming harder and harder for people to afford. Another good pro is housing starts are up 34%. However, we know the supply chain is strained. So really, we've got all these conflicting variables out there, and to be honest, I don't think anyone knows what's going to happen. But for us, what you'll hear is kind of we're expecting a slowdown in some of our revenue categories, and we're trying to be kind of stable in rates, stable in taxes, and try to float into revale, see what's happening in the future. I think I've just hit this. Really, I think one item to hit here is the cost of doing business is going up, and that's affecting our enterprise funds significantly, and we'll talk more about that as we go. And lastly, really those outside factors. COVID, I mean, you hear a lot about China lockdowns right now. What's going to happen with COVID going forward? The war in Ukraine, and what the Federal Reserve's going to do with monetary policy. Those are the biggest three things I think that are going to affect us locally and what happens with our budget.
On the second one, the lack of revenue diversity, does that mean, like, basically we get all our money from property taxes and sales taxes?
That's right. Yep. I want to show something for reference here. This is the Fed's dot plot. I don't remember when they started doing this, but this is March of 2019, and this is where the Fed, the board members say, these are where we expect rates to be, right? And so over here on the left, this is 2.5%. This was 2019, 2.5%. Everyone was saying, yeah, we'll be right in that range, and we'll slowly grow, some more, I guess, conservative than others in the long-term, 21, 20, and 19. So keep that in mind, 2.5% was kind of where we were at. And then, and those were all-time lows, right? Those were all-time low rates. And this is March of '20. So pandemic hit, rates bottomed, and they pretty much said, longer term, we'll get back to 2.5, but not in the near term. And so this was the most recent March '22 plot. And what you can see, and really my takeaway here is, I think there's a lot of talk about, you know, the Fed's going to raise rates, it's going to slam on the brakes, it's going to cause a massive recession. That's all, anyone's opinion is valid here, but if you think back to 2019, we were into a 2.5. You know, we're looking at getting to 2 at the end of this year, maybe 2.5 by the end of '23. So there's a lot of wiggle room. I think there's a lot of play in monetary policy. However, inflation is like a very serious concern here. And what we hear most concerning is if we end up slowing the economy down, but inflation doesn't drop and it just stagnates, then that could cause a real problem. So really, what the Fed does from a monetary perspective, we don't know how it's going to, the market's going to react, but we hope inflation drops, we hope supply chain improves, and we hope we get to kind of a stable, stable slowing down, not a big drop. And lastly, just want to leave y'all, if you want to look up, this is Mr. Walden of NC State. He's a local economist in our state and well-renowned, and he does a report, and this is his March '22 report, of different indexes that he averages to display where he thinks the North Carolina economy is going. He's looking at manufacturing hours, manufacturing earnings, building permits, unemployment claims, and the like, and averages those. And he's showing right now, we're in a pretty strong growth model. So really, I think kind of what I've said already and what he sums up here is there's three factors that will drive the future course of the North Carolina economy. One is COVID, which will be a positive for the economy if cases and severity decline. Second is the Ukraine war. If it escalates and directly involves US forces, fear of what may happen could put the economy in reverse. Conversely, a settlement or even a stalemate would be viewed positively from an economic perspective. Third is how fast the Federal Reserve tightens monetary policy and slows the economy to curtail inflation. So we're kind of at the whim of those three items. I think those are three things we should be really paying attention to, and I think we need to be conservative in our budget development this year. So with that, John, anything you want to add there before I jump into the general fund?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head, Brian. It is, you know, we go into this, and we remind everybody, we go into this with a little bit of a crystal ball, hoping we know what the next 12 months are going to bring. But as we've seen, what we project doesn't always happen, as you saw with the Fed thinking that we're going to, you know, raise rates higher and went to an all-time low with COVID and everything. So it'll be interesting to see where we move through the next 12 months. I mean, I think it's interesting, even though our disposable income's going down, this will be the first summer that I think folks are really going to be active, going to be out, you know, post-COVID. I think people are past it. So it'll be interesting to see, at least our local economists will be in pretty good shape, and even with the housing development. I think, too, the numbers, Brian, that you've shown is, even if there is a slowdown, you know, our community tends to lag a little bit on the slowdown. So it gives us a little bit of wiggle room. So I think it's good to keep watching it. I think we still need to be conservative, but we've got enough levers to pull in the budget, I think.
Yeah. Really interesting statistic related to that is the North Carolina housing starts being up 34%. Nationally, it was like 2%. So North Carolina is strong, and we know locally here we're strong. So do think things are in a good spot. It's just kind of there's a lot of eerie things on the horizon.
Exactly right.
All right. So with that, let's jump into the general fund. In the packet we gave you, you've got the presentation with four slides per page, really hard to see, but that one's more of a reference guide. You've got the water sewer annual report, and then also we printed really big pieces of paper of the summary tables that we're going to review, because they're kind of hard to review on here, but it's a great basis to go off of. They're in order, so as we go, those are there. When we hit the first one, that will be the first one on top, so, and we'll keep flipping through. So in two slides, prepare to have your big papers out. So we're going to overview those summary tables. We're going to dive more into detail on revenues, more into detail on expenditures. We're going to talk about our fund balance, and then we're going to talk about the model and our strategic plan and what our future outlook looks like. Things to remember, this is a conservative best guess, right? These are budgets. These are not our finance director's audits, which is all real life. This is make-believe that we do in the budget office a little bit. So we're looking at the future, given a best guess. Recommended and adjusted, which you'll see on titles of columns, are kind of interchangeable. From a budget process, we start at a requested level, get to an adjusted level, and then get to the adopted level. So adjusted is where we are right now. We also say it's our recommended budget at the time, but we'll get to an adopted budget come June. Estimate columns are dated of adoption. We like to make estimates at the beginning of the year, and then we don't change them, we lock them in. We say, let's see how we did, go back and see if what we're saying is making sense, and if we're off, we need to go back and kind of tweak how we're making these estimates. So something that is a really good check for us and for Council is to say, okay, your estimates were off by a certain percentage, why was that? So when you see estimate columns, that's what that means. And then anything with a shaded bar or a dashed line in a graph, that's estimates. Those aren't actual numbers. Anything that's not transparent is an actual number. So the very difficult to see full summary table of the general fund, this is listing revenues by source on the left, expenditures by type, other financing sources and uses, which are things that are considered non-operating, and then our fund balance at the bottom. And we're starting with FY '21 actuals, because it shows you the whole year. Again, just here's your labels, like ad valorem taxes, those are our property taxes. It's a revenue source, and then it runs across the screen. Our columns at the top are the FY '21 requested, FY '21 adopted, FY '21 revised, our estimate that year, and where actuals actually came in. So that is our logical process and budget. I'm not showing the adjusted level here, but you'll see that for FY '22 and FY '23. And then on the right is showing our dollar change and our percent change over the FY ' '21 estimate. So how close did we get at the beginning of the year to what happened at the very end of the year, 12 months later? So our revenues came in 6% higher in FY '21 than what we thought was going to happen, and our expenditures came in 4% below. That's atypical. We kind of were going off one of our averages, and this year actually kind of blew that average out of the water. This was a COVID year, right? So we pulled back pretty hard on the reins on revenue estimates. We were estimating decreases in sales tax, and we pulled back hard on the reins on spending. And this is what happens when sales tax comes in at an extremely high rate, and we pull back. So we were 6% off on that estimate. But we do think we'll get into a more normal pattern going forward. And what you can see, the result of that was, is at the very bottom, we added $1 million to our fund balance, $1,083,878, and increased to 9.6 million total. So that's the takeaway on this page, just want to give us a point of reference for where FY '21 was. Moving into FY '22 and FY '23, this slide is to illustrate where we started our requested budget for FY '23, that middle column, and where we are now, the adjusted or recommended column. And what you can see is revenues, we've increased those slightly, 3% over our original estimate that we established in January and February, and our expenditures have, we've cut about 1.35 million out of department requests. I appreciate everybody in the room for being so amenable with working with us. We know it's difficult to not get everything you need as a department, but we do know we're all working for the same team, so everyone's been great to work with, and we were able to get 1.35 million out. Majority of that coming from position requests. There was quite a few positions requested, a total of $14.4 million of personnel and benefits requests. We are at a level right now of 13.3 million. And we'll talk more about what's included in that as we go through. We've cut out about $500,000 in operating costs and about $35,000 in capital costs. At the bottom, you can see also our non-operating revenues and expenses. You'll note that debt proceeds is funding annual vehicle and equipment replacements. Transfers in, that 1.25 million is ARP funds. The transfer out is for safer grant firefighter costs and parking services fund, kind of shoring up that fund. We'll talk more through all of those in detail as we go.
Can I ask you a question about the ARP funds?
Yes.
This is, have we already received, or do we get the total 4.5 million in increments? Or do we have it sitting in some account somewhere, and we just kind of draw off of it?
There's two tranches, I think they're calling it John B. tranches, is that the word they're using? Two of them. The first was half, so we've received 2.75 million-ish. John, is that 2.4 million? And we're, should receive the next tranche in June or July of this year.
Okay, thank you.
But we're waiting that second payment.
Are we investing that money currently?
Yes. All right.
And there are no restrictions on the interest we are...
Correct.
Correct.
Jerry, does have to be in a special, I mean, we are setting aside.
A special fund, yeah.
But we don't have the whole amount yet.
No.
Seconds due, next several months.
Can the interest made be spent on other things than what the ARP money is actually for?
Yes.
Is that what you were asking? Okay, I had to dumb it down for myself, so I understood. Okay.
All right. I'm going to jump forward. So that, just again, this one just illustrating where we were at a requested level, where we got to today, and then we'll get to an adopted budget come June. This next one, looking at the '22 revised budget to the adjusted or recommended budget for '23. This is kind of historically, we've operated off the revised. But based on kind of how crazy things have been, and FY '22 being really an adjustment year, we hired a lot of positions. We've implemented a paying class, part of a paying class study. There's a lot that's happened. So we're at, we actually moved everything back to the adopted level, which you'll see on the next slide to look at comparison's sake, because it doesn't necessarily paint a real picture of the difference between a year ago and today. Typically, we looked at, look at revised, because it's more accurate. But this year, it's really substantially different than what the adopted level was. So you can see revenues from revised to requested or adjusted, adjusted rather, is 3.6%. Expenditures increasing 5%. And you'll see that's significantly different from the adopted level, 8% and 12.4%, respectively. So we're going to walk through kind of each of these as we go through and explain the changes over the prior year. But at a high level, what you can see on this page is you can see increases for the FY '23 adjusted budget are about 2.3% higher in property tax collections, 14% higher in sales tax, 200,000 or 44% higher in restricted governmental. I'll explain that in a moment. And then also, our sales and services are up about 40%, $110,000. On the expenditure side, you can see the increase of $1 million in personnel and benefits, about 8.5%. We'll dive into that. And then other increases in operating capital and debt service, which we'll also explain as we go through today in more detail. At the very bottom, I want to highlight the high level estimate for FY '23 right now. Right now, we're expecting about $20.5 million in revenues and spending about 22 million in expenditures on an operating level. You add in our debt proceeds, ARP funds, our transfer out, and it gets us to pretty much breaking even. Estimated to put $27,000 back in fund balance. Bringing your total fund balance at the very bottom to 9.9 million. And we'll look at that in the model and what that means for, for future sustainability. All right, so property taxes, ad valorem taxes. Right now, from the tax office, we have an increase in value of about 1.25% on average. You see the increase at the top is 2.3%. The reason for that is when we adopt the budget for FY '22, much like what's going to happen here in FY '23, we're working off preliminary numbers, and then we get the final tax scroll. So it's naturally a somewhat conservative process. And so it's about one percentage point over what actually happened from the tax scroll adoption for FY '22. We're estimating a collection rate at 98%. I believe we've been getting towards the 99% range, John. So really good partnership with the county there. But 98% is kind of what we're using for our budget. And then the tax rate of 52 cents per hundred, $100. Remember, no being the theme, no proposed change this year. And our value per penny is about $223,000 per penny. Looking at assessed values, this chart shows our total assessed value in dollars. And I've highlighted the revaluation years. So you can see we're up above 2.1 billion. We're, we're right at 2.2 billion or so. We're 5% over the revale at this point. Other moments in the past, we've been closer to 8% over the revale in year three. And, you know, we had stronger growth in these years. Obviously, the reset, the Great Recession had significant impacts on our tax values. And then we had a really positive revaluation in FY '20, where this board elected to capture, recapture revenues to pay for multiple different projects and studies and things that we've done from a policy standpoint.
I have a question. You may have this on another slide, but do we have a slide, I know we haven't seen one in a couple of years, that shows how much value of property we have in the city that is not...
Tax exempt. I had a feeling you were going to ask that question. I did not prepare the slide, unfortunately. But I can, I can get that and provide it to you all on our June budget presentation.
I assume the data has only increased.
It's certainly changed, I'm sure, especially with expansions of certain facilities that are pretty prominent on I-26. Yeah.
Yeah, the one that has the big gigantic comparing everything in this big tower.
Well, that one and just the pie chart, I think, showing personal real...
I like the tower chart.
Taxes in, you like the tower chart? Okay, I can probably pull that up at a break, so we can look at that. We can update the tower chart. That is a good point, though. We, we do have a good deal of tax exempt property on the scroll.
Right, so you can get that, so it's like, how much property is tax exempt?
Right.
The value of it.
Yeah, I can show you that. Another way of looking at this is percent change. So you can see the strong reval years is typical. That minus six and that 0.8 were pretty dismal after the recession. It took us at least seven years to get to our pre-recession level through there. But one thing I really just want to highlight here, related to what we're going to look at in the model later, is the impact of development on the tax base. And what you can see right here, 1314, this would be like Ballentine, Common, Expansion, Brittany Place, see that positive growth. And then other, you know, when development was going strong, you can see the, the growth in the tax rate in these early years on, on the tax books. So just something to keep in mind. Wanted to go back. I, I got to watch the Matthews-Holly Springs meeting while holding a baby. So that was, that was enjoyable. But I wanted to dive a little further into these communities. You know, you got to hear from them on kind of their level of service, how they grew, what things they would do differently. So being the financial nerd that I am, I looked at their audits and saw what they looked like from a financial standpoint. And so a couple of things to note here. You can see their, the population comparisons, the total square miles of incorporated area, tax value from 2020 and tax value from 2003, tax rates from 2020 and 2003, the value per mile of their, their organization, the population per mile, and then their expenditures per person in their community. And really interestingly, you just take a look at that tax value growth. Matthews grew by about $3 billion. Holly Springs grew by four. We grew by one and a half. And you can see what, you know, kind of what that does from a tax rate perspective. You can see Matthews today is four cents below what they were in 2003. Holly Springs is about seven, can I do math right? Five, five cents below what they were in 2003. And we are up about, we were up four cents in 2020 over what we were in 2003. You can see actually from a, kind of a density standpoint, the value per mile, we're actually doing pretty good. Again, this does not take into effect anything that might be tax exempt. And then you can see the population per mile, Holly Springs being the densest at this moment. And then the spending per capita. So this is tied to tax rate, it's tied to level of service. You probably need a lot more backing on this one to really understand what's going on here. But our expenditures per person are $1,118. Comparatively, you can see Matthews is spending much less per person. I don't know all the services they provide. You really need to know kind of what the level of service is in that community. But you also see their tax rate is 28 cents. So they're not producing a ton of revenue to spend per person. And then Holly Springs is closer to us at $1,050 per person. Go ahead, Jerry.
I was going to say, but another key difference between those two towns and our town is, our town is the economic draw during the day. Those towns, especially Holly Springs, is not. Everybody in that town goes to Raleigh to go to work and comes back at night. Matthews, maybe not as much, but a lot of those people get in their car and drive to Charlotte.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah, Matthews is very similar bedroom community, moving into Charlotte.
So as far as expenditures per capita, we have a lot more people during the day that spend money on than they do.
Yep.
It's an observation.
And I think, you know, one thing we've heard through, through the retreat phases leading into this workshop, and kind of what you see with these organizations as well, when you look at some of their, their reliances, we're all reliant on the property tax in North Carolina. That, that's what we control. Density and growth are kind of what funds futures levels of services. And depending on what level of service you have, that's kind of the toggles you've got to work with.
And they had some industrial development, too, in their city limits.
Holly Springs, yeah.
Substantially increased there. Because I don't remember the number, but like how much, when an industry comes and the amount of services provided per person.
Yeah. Yeah, we have that all in that, the tower chart model has all that information, so.
I would also be curious, since 2003, the, has the square, like mileage of the cities changed? And what percentage?
That was very difficult. I thought of that, too, and I could not find that information very easily, so.
Well, you heard... I know Holly Springs has gotten a lot bigger.
Holly Springs and Matthews hasn't, because...
Pretty landlocked, right?
Yeah, and they did that big legislative annexation. You know, when, when the manager, Hazen Blodgett, was here, he talked about that, you know, when Jim Black was Speaker of the House, who was from Matthews, they did that legislative annexation to close in the community. That would have been about that time. And so, yeah, they, they haven't grown, they would not have grown as much.
So Holly Springs hasn't grown as...
No, Holly Springs would have, but Matthews, Matthews would not have.
So I, I just, I thought that was a really awesome aspect of the retreat and wanted to share some additional information on those communities. Jumping into unrestricted intergovernmental, this includes a variety of things, but the biggest being our local option sales tax. We'll talk a little bit about this. I know, I talk a lot about this, so we'll, we'll try to be brief. We're up about $825,000 over the FY '22 budget adopted. And there's a lot that goes into that. When we adopted, the FY '21 actuals were actually 20% over FY '20 actuals. That's about $750,000. The FY '23 budget is 825 over the FY '22 adopted. And we're breaching $5 million in collections at a 4% estimated growth for FY '23. The FY '22 end of year estimate, I would just note how much higher that is than the adopted budget. And then lastly, for FY '23, taking into consideration the local distributions, which is based on tax levy, is a half percent increase in our distribution share, which in current dollars would have been $250,000 in additional sales tax revenue. So we can expect that type of increase in our share. Now, if, you know, if sales tax plummet, we're going to do better than the rest. But it doesn't mean we'll have necessarily $250,000 more in sales taxes.
When other municipalities change their tax rate, that affects our rate that we collect.
Yes.
Do we know if other municipalities are changing their tax rates this year?
That is very difficult to know. We, you know, we kind of keep an eye on it. I don't know what's going on. But what you can tell is, the interesting thing about it, Jen, is so what we did last year, when we adopted, the budget we're currently in, we adopted a 3 cent tax increase. We're seeing that return in this next budget.
Okay.
So really, what happens this year is going to be two budgets away.
Okay.
So it's a really complex, kind of, murky.
And I'm almost scared to say this, but I'll say it. You know, when we, when we look at industrial economic development, you know, we do provide incentives in accordance with the law. And you can only provide incentives on industrial. Like I usually project independence as an example. We're giving a hundred, you know, we've offered 100% of their tax incentives for, for five to seven years there. So you think, well, the city's not gaining anything. But when those folks come, we still get, that goes into our levy. So it benefits us on sales tax. So the community is gaining, even though we are providing incentives to these companies, because that goes into how we calculate the redistribution of sales tax. So the, the community is gaining day one, as soon as the, the, they open up, they open their doors. So even though we provide these incentives to get these multi-state companies to come here, there is a gain out of the gate. So this, Hendersonville's not suffering for seven years. We're actually, there's a gain day one, as soon as they open. So I think we miss, we don't always talk about that all the time, but there, that is a positive, because it does go into our tax levy and calculate it on how the sales tax is distributed.
That's right.
So it's not just your tax rate, it's actually how much, what your tax levy would, like the, the absolute value, what that would be?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, you know, Fletcher is growing faster than us, they're gaining more sales tax share.
Right, even if the tax rate stays the same, if the amount that you could be taxing...
Yeah.
Greases, that's how it's, okay.
So even though, you know, we are providing that incentive off the property taxes, that...
For purposes of this calculation, that doesn't matter.
It didn't matter.
Yeah, correct. Thanks, John. Other things in here are electricity, pipe, natural gas, telecom, and franchise agreements, video programming fees, which are all sales taxes on the consumer. Those are, telecom and video programming have historically been decreasing electricity and pipe, natural grasses. Pipe, natural gas more than electricity has been going up, and electricity kind of bounces around up and down. So those are all calculated in this as well, if we want to talk any further on those. But just wanted to provide that for information. Want to show some historicals. So this is FY '20, ended June 30th of '20. You can see what happened when the pandemic started. We kind of slammed on the brakes, and our sales tax collections decreased over the prior year, even though they were averaging a really strong kind of 13% level prior. And then we kind of bounced right back come June. That was FY '20, ended up 10% over the prior year. Total collections is $3.85 million. Just want to highlight these just to illustrate how important sales tax has been in our ability to fund services without having to raise property tax. Here is FY '21, a truly remarkable year of 20% increase over the prior year, $4.6 million in collections. And you can see, like, it's pretty steady in average at the near 20 level. And then, of course, your March and April are coming off of a decrease. So those jumped tremendously, 43 and 40%, respectively. And then we rounded it out for a total of 19.38% year-over-year collections. And then here's where we are today. Again, to note, we are developing budgets for a future year based on kind of a six-month lag of data from sales taxes. You can see, we've been pretty steady in the 12% range. I hit the wrong button there. Let's see, yeah, in the 12% range, except for, you know, and what we're seeing now is that slowdown, right? January kind of fell off. And we're going to see kind of, we're going to keep monitoring this and see what happens. Because sales tax is going to be the most reflective of economic conditions. And we just saw the first quarter came out for the nation for their GDP growth, and we actually declined in growth by 1 point something percent. Doesn't mean a recession yet, but there are signs of the economy slowing down. So we'll see what happens for the rest of '22. But right now, estimated total annual collection of $5.1 million for the, for the year. 11% over the prior year. Another way to look at this is just on a line chart. You can see FY '18 over here, we were in the, you know, $200,000 range per collection. And over on the far side, FY '22, the back, the yellow bars in the back are refunds. Tax exempt properties like us pay sales taxes, but then we get refunded those sales taxes. So that's something, it's really sporadic. We don't know when it's going to hit. And when all of a sudden, we have a really big refund month, it lowers our percent share. So it's something to note, because you can see that with that January drop, there was also a pretty high refund amount. So that's, could be reflective of why January was lower than the rest. This is just another way to look at it from a percent change, year-over-year perspective of the first three charts we saw. Again, FY '20, you can see the pandemic and the lockdown. FY '21, pretty ridiculously strong growth. And then where we are, kind of an average, good economy, what we were seeing in 1920... good economy, what we were seeing in 1920 before the pandemic, kind of back at that level, not to mention that we could go into something like this, which is a little worrisome, but this, this was mostly due to the tax rate distribution discussion we just had. This, this year was predominantly due to a five cent tax increase from the county and a seven cent tax increase from Mills River, really slammed the brakes on our sales tax collection and distribution that year.
Can I ask a question about the refunds?
Yeah.
So, the big project we have here is the construction of Hendersonville High School. Does that mean that, I think that what that means is every time the school board makes a payment on that construction, and we bought, you know, I don't know, a bunch of rock and you paid sales tax on it.
Yep.
They're going to get that sales tax back, so initially.
Assuming they file correctly, yeah. You gotta, you gotta submit for it.
Assuming they filed and submitted correctly, so at first we get a bump, and then later on, we get a drop because they got their sales tax back.
Yeah, that's correct.
And it's charged directly against us because it was charged in our.
Yeah, it just comes out of the collection, yeah.
Right.
So it's really hard to tell when those things are going to happen, like another tax exempt property, like Carolina Village, doing a lot of construction. And, yes, and one thing to note too, if you go to, the 2.1% increase in January of '22 could possibly also be related to a stimulus package. Stimulus package came out in January of '21, people probably spent a lot of that money, probably some people saved it, but the most of us, I think, probably spent it, and you've probably saw a really big boost there, and that's probably why January '22 has dropped some over the prior year, but refunds play into it, and there's just a lot of things that play into it, but I do want to highlight, from a construction market, is a really strong driver of sales taxes, right? So all private developments, building, and paying sales taxes on lumber and concrete and things like that are going to be a strong growth pattern for our sales tax as well.
And I think that, that goes back to Brian made a comment earlier about North Carolina's housing starts, and the fact that we were up 30, say 34%.
34%.
34%. So I think, you know, as long as the housing, the housing market is strong in North Carolina in construction, that, that bodes pretty well for, for our sales tax, because if you go, if you go back to, you know, some of the data back, you know, where we saw it really go down is, you know, through the, through the Great Recession, right? And prior to it, that didn't quite, but that's when housing stopped, you know, we stopped building houses. Construction in North Carolina really, it was strong up until, you know, 2008, so we were doing it, and then it went flat for about 10, 12 years. So, housing construction in North Carolina drives the sales tax tremendously, year-over-year.
Do we supply great annual reports like this type of thing to, like, large community stakeholders that are tax exempt? Like, just providing them with this data?
We haven't done any educational stuff for like taxes exempt properties specifically, no.
Is it something to consider?
Yes.
I mean, just.
Asking our input, yes.
Providing them with the information? I don't think it hurts.
Yeah. We could certainly develop something that's a.
Some sort of a report?
Incise report that, yeah. A lot of this stuff requires a lot of context to kind of digest.
Yeah.
We could do presentations, we could do.
Benefits that you.
Radio spots, things like that.
Yeah, those ones.
Okay. Kind of tie it all together, this chart is showing, and you don't have this one in your packet, in the big, big version, this one is showing our FY22 actuals, and you can see our estimated year-end there at the bottom, just showing how we're getting to that $5.1 million number. And then, wanted to also show, I'm sorry, this might be a little destroying in thought process, but this is our percent, percentage share and how it's changed, so the top one is FY21 actuals, and you can see, this is one option is per capita, you can see the percentage distribution to each organization, and then the one we're, we're operating under is ad valorem, and you can see the percentage share of each organization. You can see Hendersonville is 8.8% in '21. In '22, we dropped to 8.64%. That was a year, that was, this is reflective of the FY21 budget adoption, where pretty much no one changed their tax rates. I think maybe Gert and Fire District, so the thing to keep in mind is all the Fire District tax rates go into this, and they count for the county's share, and our MSDs count for our share. And then after our tax increase, you can see the summary of what happened on the right for FY22, we're expecting to jump to 9.14% of the total share in FY23 sales tax distribution. So you can see the city's three cent tax increase, the main street's two cent tax decrease, and then you pile in all the just growth that happened from an assessed value standpoint, this is what we expect for FY23. So we're, we're jumping from 8.64 to 9.14.
Under the tax levy column, that number represents.
Tax rate times assessed value divided.
Right, so that's what 9.14% equals.
Yeah, we're 9.14% of the total of all those tax levies.
Yes, that's what that equals.
Yeah, ours is, yeah, divide by the total.
Yeah.
So just one thing to note too, you can see, outside of a major census change, population, the per capita doesn't fluctuate very much from a tax rate distribution method.
We still get more money that way.
Yeah, oh yeah. Municipalities, we get more money, the county we get less, and that's not going to change.
I get it, I got it.
I don't know, I wouldn't do that if I were the county. So FY23 is based on this. Kind of last, kind of parting thought is on sales taxes, yeah, inflation's going up, disposal income's going down, that's definitely a worry, and right now, the summary of all this is we're budgeting a 4% increase, right? So we're taking into account construction market, housing starts, growth in development, we're taking into consideration the local distribution method changing, but we're also taking into consideration all these economic uncertainties, and this is kind of where we're at, we're saying 4% is our guess, we'll see what happens. We're hopeful, conservative, right? But we're always able to adjust as the year goes on, and that's what we typically do, we check this regularly and we adjust accordingly. That's it on sales taxes. The very bottom line of the total revenues for the general fund, the restricted intergovernmental increases, the SRO reimbursements, the sales and services reflects our parking revenue going to Fund 64, which is our new parking services fund, so all our meters and permit revenue is now in that new fund, general fund lost that, but we also increased paving, cut, repair revenues, something we'll talk about in the expenditure section. Any question on revenues or I'm going to keep rolling? Awesome. Personnel and benefits, big topic, we've moved to the 75th percentile of the paying class, and we have increased our merit distribution from, anywhere from 1 to 2.5 to 1 to 3%. We're going to take that in small chunks and slowly increase that range from outstanding to achieves.
Can I ask a question? Is that increase there over '22 adopted?
That's correct, yeah, that, that million dollars is over the adopted.
Adopted.
Budget of '22, yeah. We saw retirement contributions increase, however, there's a couple of things in here that have kind of pulled back and helped us on, the personnel side is a great health insurance renewal of a decrease of 12%. Big kudos to our employees for really working hard on our wellness program, that, that helps us be able to do things like the paying classification study. We also don't budget a mid-year bonus in here, that's, that's part of what that decrease, you know, it's an increase, but it should be an increase of more, right? Naturally, when you add positions and paying class in. So some of these things are pulling that number back down a little bit. And then the new positions that we have in here, and we'll talk about a couple of these in detail, it's one police sergeant, one animal enforcement, civilian position, deputy fire chief for administrative, IT director, communications coordinator, increasing a part-time analyst to a full-time analyst in the budget department, one property maintenance crew leader, and three maintenance workers, which is really going to be six, but really only three are funded through the general fund, we'll talk about that one in detail as well.
Brian, if I could jump in here.
Yep.
I told all our employees at the state of the city meeting about the retirement contribution, I think it's important for council to hear this too. So the, the manager's retirement committee gave an update at our conference back in January, and if, you know, those of you who've been on the board a while know that about 10 or 11 years ago, we started this process of increasing the employee-er's contribution in the retirement system to get the, with the goal of getting the local government employee retirement system fully funded. And because there was, there was, because of some bad analysis or just, just some things that didn't pan out, we weren't quite as healthy, that fund wasn't quite as healthy as, as we wanted it to be. Well, the report we got this past January, that you see there that the increase, the contributions going up to 12.14 and 13.24, that it's anticipated that by 2025, the state, the local government employees' retirement system will be 100% funded by 2025, which is, which is great, it's unheard of in most, if you pay attention to pension funds. The goal is, is once we get it fully funded, is that these employer contributions can start coming back down. We don't think it'll, the employee contribution now is just over 6%, and the employer used to be that, it used to be just over 6%, and it's grown now to almost 13, 12 to 13%. Hopefully what will happen is, if the economy stays stable, we'll be able to get that employer contribution back down to around a nine or 10%, which we think is probably sustainable. So you should, you should hopefully see that over a period of time, but the retirement program is in very good shape for local government employees, so.
Is that the idea that they'll stop at 9%, like it will never go below that?
They just don't know whether it's sustainable, I mean, it's best guess now, you know, as long as the actual ARL returns and those kind of things, but they think, we don't want to think it'll ever get back down to.
Probably never should have been there.
That's probably right, that's right, so. But I just wanted to give you that update, so.
Diving into some of the requests, I'll explain this a little bit. So on the police department side, you know, we requested two positions, and it, it was a strategy attempt from us to really generate more service while asking for less. So we requested a sergeant and a civilian animal control officer. The two requested positions being dark blue, the existing positions being light blue, the ghost persons, just don't ignore that person. What we would like to do is create a new traffic safety unit, and our goal was to swap the animal control sworn officers with a single civilian officer to work kind of peak times, and then, you know, HPD would respond after hours for animal control, but they would respond as, you know, a full unit, not just a dedicated position that only does that. And with that, we also were applying for a grant for Governor Highway Safety Patrol for additional positions. We learned just two days ago that we did not get that grant for this year, but it's something we're going to continue working towards, and what, kind of what we want to get to is this model where we have a full new team on the road using existing positions while only funding two additional police officer roles to take care of animal control and lead that unit. Chief, is there anything that I missed there, or John, anything I missed that y'all want to add to this?
I think the goal from the animal control model is take two sworn officers and add those to the patrol units, or into a traffic safety unit, and, and shift the animal control to a civilian that will use sworn officers when they, when this person needs them, but and we feel like a civilian animal control person can work more closely with the animal shelter, can work more closely, because what officers, officers were doing is when, when they weren't doing animal control, they were doing regular policing type things, and the animal control person will focus strictly on animal control, they can do public education, they can work with the local vets regarding, you know, rabies vaccination, they can work very closely with the Animal Services Center, the County Animal Services Center, so it's changed that model from really focusing on animal control, dealing with nuisance animal stuff, and then they have the backup, and Chief, you know, if I'm saying anything wrong, you let me know, but we would, you know, if we needed the sworn officer, the sworn officer could come assist, but the animal control would be much more of a civilian, and both where I came from and, and, you know, nine or 10 years ago, and where Chief came from, they were civilian officers that allowed the sworn officers to do what they needed to do, and then they were just backups. So if you went to deal with an issue, and it's simply a barking dog, you know, the civilian went there versus a sworn, and allow us to take those two sworn positions and put them on traffic safety, so that's the concept, and we feel like it's probably got some merit to it, and start improving those relationships.
Has the Animal Advisory Board made any progress on a no tethering policy or anything like that, because I know that that would obviously increase the need for enforcement?
So they've had several discussions, I don't know that they've, Chief, you correct me, I don't know that they've tackled tethering yet, I know that's something.
We, we did talk about that at the last meeting, and, and that is an issue that they're looking at, and we're trying to figure out, the exact wording, I think the recommendation is, there's not much change to the tethering ordinance as it is right now, we, we're, we're going away from the, the, you can tether for two hours sort of thing, it's very difficult to enforce that way. But, you know, that is something that they're talking about, this civilian animal control person is a recommendation from that board as well. Again, we, we want to get away from police officers writing leash law tickets, I think that people understand when the, and I'm using air quotes here, the dog catcher is the one that's enforcing some of these, you know, non-misdemeanor, non-criminal things, barking dogs, leash laws, you know, defecating in yards, that, that's sort of a.
Okay.
You know, violations of our ordinances.
Thank you.
So the civilian will basically have the same power as our codes enforcement officer?
Exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah. So they'll be writing, they can write citations based on the city code.
So I thought this was an important aspect to highlight for you all, it's a change of $173,000, but we're, I feel, feel we're getting a really strong return on value for it, and hopefully can build into getting those granted positions to have a full new unit for really the cost of two.
And Chief, you want to, he just was bringing me up to date, that we did get the grant, but they're providing $25,000 for overtime so that we can focus on traffic with the idea that if we can strengthen our case a little bit, that there may be opportunities for officers in the future.
Yeah, so the, the state recognized that we do have a high number of crashes, thankfully this, the severity of our crashes is, is low as compared to other places in the state, so they are willing to give us $25,000 that we can spend directly on traffic enforcement with the hopes of reducing some of our traffic crash numbers, and if we're able to do that and demonstrate that to them, I think we'll, according to them, we'll be more successful in maybe getting personnel grant in the future.
But this budget makes that happen? The budget we're.
We're, we're missing the grant positions, so essentially pull those grant positions off the slide right now.
So the two left, we don't get.
Right.
But we start with two or three people.
Yeah.
In this unit.
That's correct.
Which is a new unit, correct?
Correct, so with this animal control position, we can take the two police officers, move them to the traffic unit, the sergeant would then supervise that unit, so we would have a three-person traffic safety unit, where we had hoped, you know, and, and if everything worked out well, we would have had four, I mean, you know, five, there'd been four officers and a sergeant, so we'll, we're starting out with a little bit less, unfortunately, but we'll just have to work a little bit harder to try to improve some of those numbers, but, but without that animal enforcement person, we're unable to, to create a traffic unit.
And when would that unit kick in, I guess July 1?
Well, I think what we're really looking at is probably October 1, that's what we were planning with the grant anyway. What we'll need to do is, is obviously hire a civilian person, train them, and then, you know, get them up to speed, and then that gives us, you know, from the time the fiscal budget is approved, we announce, we do a hiring process, get them trained, I'm thinking that's 60 to 90 days, so I'm really still looking at about October 1 to, to officially stand the, our traffic safety unit up.
Would the county still have their control division?
They do, yes, and, and the county still uses sworn deputies for animal control.
Do you think signal controls contribute to a lot of the traffic accidents? Like, I'm just trying to think of the things that we could directly impact or change, and I know some of the, like, information we got from MPO has to do with like signaling and those types of things, and are those things that we could ask the state to help us with? us with?
We can, we've asked DOT on, on a lot of things, and, and there's so many factors that go into it, I mean, just one, as an example, the, the light on Four Seasons, Four Seasons turned on to Ash Street where the new PD was, we really tried to get the cycling changed on that to allow more time to get, you know, the turn signals, and it's, it seems to be a very difficult process to do that, but we can certainly, where we think a signaling change would, would improve that, we'll certainly ask DOT to help us do that. I will say, just from my observations, red light violations are, are very frequent in this city, and I'm not sure exactly why that is, but people are running red lights.
It's a, it's a culture. I talked to kids at school, and I told my son, who's learning to drive, I said, "That's not the way you're supposed to drive," because people do it all the time, I said, "That is not the way you're supposed to drive." I just think it's a cultural thing here, for whatever reason, people have grown up thinking I can run that thing and get away with it.
Well, I would recommend if you're first in line when the light turns green, count one Mississippi before you go.
Yeah, and Main Street.
Yes.
Regularly on Main Street.
We had a lady drive straight at us on King Street yesterday, she just, well, and she turned around us, which was the other thing, that I was like, "Why, okay."
If there's anything I can do at the MPO to help request additional help with signaling and those types of things, I'm happy to do that, so just pass that info to me.
Does a problem with stop signs, can you stop somebody as well?
Yes.
Debbie, can you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry.
You're good.
I mean, I think a lot of it is a lack of people paying attention, honestly, they're just distracted driving.
Well, let me, let me go on record now, and defend the chief a little bit, because this traffic safety unit will be focusing on those things, and we will be stopping more vehicles and possibly warnings and citations, you know, out of the gate, that's what, that's what that traffic safety unit's for, is to focus on areas where we have a lot of accidents, a lot of red light running, stop sign running, that's, that's, that's the intention, so just want to be clear what the, what that unit will be doing, so it's, you know, you don't have quotas in North Carolina, and we don't raise funding by writing tickets, this is all about safety, so this is all about safety, so I just want to be real clear about, so.
Let me clarify, I, I was not criticizing the police at all.
No, oh, yeah.
People just being irresponsible, you know, and, yeah, I mean, it's a stop sign, that means you're supposed to stop.
Yeah, and we will be focused on outcomes rather than output, but I'm sure there will be an increase in citations issued, we're really trying to change driving behavior, but.
Is there a way to require people to do, so, I may have gotten a ticket in Kentucky, like, a year ago, and, but, so if you, is there, so they required me to just do an online course, and then the, the ticket was waived, but honestly, I feel like I learned a lot of information, and I took a class, wow, like, 10 years ago, at Blue Ridge Community College also, where, you know, one of the things was, they told us, you know, two seconds of your eyes off the road for something in your car, you traveled like more than a football field length of time, and that was like, oh my gosh, you know, just thinking about, so is there a way to, like, maybe from an educational standpoint, to require that as a stipulation for traffic violations?
I mean, we can certainly ask the district attorney's office to recommend that when they're, you know, working out plea deals.
I would rather see people do that than pay a fine, because a lot of times they go pay their fine, and they're done, and they, you know, go on about their business, but, you know, maybe making people learn what they're doing and the impact that they have on other people.
I mean, I think with this unit, I mean, you know, we'll have to see what sort of bandwidth we have with it, but that's, that could be something that they could do, we could have a driver safety course for those, have the DA's office, you know, use that in part of plea deals and, and, and that, but, I mean, I think education would, would go a long way.
Thank you.
To, to wrap up this slide, again, I want to call our attention to what, what was requested, you know, we, we have a lot of core services like this, from a level of servicing perspective, that we're trying to, to bump up and, and meet kind of those service excellence points we, we like to live by here in the city, and the police department had a wealth of other requests that didn't go funded, and again, we're trying to do as much as we can with as little requests as possible, so just something to keep in mind as we continue through the day. Thanks for the insights, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Talking a little bit more on Public Works, specifically the streets requests, so right now, we have an existing supervisor and a crew of six that focus on street sidewalks and right of ways. What our proposal is, is to hire a new crew of six, $170,000 funded out of the general fund, using that paving cut repair revenue to offset that expenditure increase, and additionally, using stormwater revenues to focus on stormwater repairs. So, this whole new unit would be just straight doing paving cut repairs, and stormwater culverts, and any other projects. This is all, no new net increase on the general fund.
I think that is a good thing for your buck, and I think our residents will be very happy to hear that.
I apologize, all these years on council, I should know this, a paving cut repair, is that where there's a hole, you cut it out, and you put new pavement in?
Yeah, and you sit, and for a while, it sits with the gravel and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's, that's what that means.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any questions here, otherwise I'll keep this rolling. Jumping into operating, this is just a base increase of 7.4%, some highlights here over the prior year adopted budget, is our adopted budget of FY '22 didn't include special appropriations. If you remember, kind of the ARP came out, we slowed down, and then we added special appropriations back into the budget later, so it's not reflected in the adopted number, it's about $130,000, because you had IAM and some others come mid-year and request funds. Repairs and maintenance is up, just cost of, cost of doing business essentially, same with fuel. We have increased our miscellaneous board expenditures, so this is the tree board, environmental sustainability, and the historic preservation commission, that's increased by about $45,000. Our liability and property insurance is up about $40,000 over the adopted, and our MRP claims, our self-funded portion, the general fund is assisting at a greater level because the sanitation fund essentially is, the sustainability of that fund is still, needs to be looked at, so we've pulled their MRP contribution out of that fund and put it in the general fund.
Where are we on the route study with that?
That would be something we're looking to start this next budget year.
Okay.
Starting it up, yeah.
And as far as our, our, I'm assuming those are premiums, liability and property insurance?
Yes, that's correct.
Did we do something to get higher premiums?
No, so it's really just looking at, if you looked at revised to recommended, it would be pretty much even. What we budget at is kind of what our claims hit, because you got to budget not just the premium, but the claims for the year, so we're budgeting at the level of the prior year claims in addition to the premium, so adopted is just premiums from last year.
Gotcha.
I'm curious about the miscellaneous board expenses?
Mm-hmm.
$45,000, what is that?
So, that is, ESB's at $12,500, that's an increase from 2,000, tree board is at 60 or so, and historic preservation's at 10 to 15. There, generally increases in each, each of those boards expenditures based on more activity, I think, from the board.
What, what we're seeing is a number of these boards wanting to, to be more active and to get things done, I'll use the ESB, because I think that's where we're funding Bee City, right, Bee City?
Yeah, that's technically, so that's in, it's its own line, I guess.
Okay.
And it's part of this, so it's $20,000, yeah.
So, you know, we, the city chose to be part of Bee City some years ago, and it's been real active, a bee mural, but this year, with the recommendation from the ESB, and frankly, looking at our staff time of the activities, it, we, we put a contract together with Burlington Garden, and for $15,000, a plus $5,000 for, so it's total 20, but 15, for their staff time to run the Bee City program, and the $5,000 for projects that we were doing throughout the year already, we felt like it was a good chunk of money, instead of having to add staff for $20,000, they're going to, they're going to contract and run the Bee City program, so that's, so that's one item they're looking at. I know the historic preservation group had historically been getting money through the years for putting up historical markers, they want to do another study, they want to look at, particularly in the historic districts, I think one of their main focuses is looking at structures that were, historic structures where absentee landlords or, or whatever may not be keeping the structures repaired, it's called demolition by neglect, and I know there's a particular interest in looking at the historic districts where vacant houses or homes are not being repaired, to have, do a study to say, hey, from a code enforcement, we need to identify these houses and let the HPC require those property owners to maintain those properties a little better, so that was, that's another goal of theirs. They had, we talked about historic plaques, I know the ESB has some goals associated with their sustainability plan, tree board, Tom, I think, tree plantings, and.
Tree root woods.
And, yeah, so a lot of their money is in maybe some bee habitat or pollinator beds or.
Some, some small pollinator stuff, but mainly, mainly tree planting projects through the, like, the, the native wood projects. I think Mary J is, and I had an email the other day, say they planted 400 trees, that program, it was 10, maybe 10 years?
Yeah, 10.
10 years. But just, you know, trying to help, you know, with the, the tree candy loss issue, and just planting trees where the.
So, so I think the bottom line is, we have some newer members on, we have some newer members on our various boards and commissions, and they're wanting to be more active, more active than they have in the past, I knew that was coming. They want to be, they want to be more active than they have been, and so what we're seeing is, and, and I think our staff is doing a little bit of a better job of helping them set goals and work plans to, to serve as arms of the city council, to, and that's one reason that we're going to start having them do annual reports to, to you, so that you know what these groups are doing, and make sure you know how the appointment, appointments are being made and those kind of things.
So, do these boards have to submit a budget to somebody?
So, that's what they're doing, yeah, they submit it, we, their staff person works with them.
So, in other words, the, these expenses here have been submitted as a request for next year for these boards?
Correct.
Okay, so whatever, so they, okay, so they're, they're, we're approving their budget for their, along with this.
That's right.
May I ask a question about one thing? Wall of Fame is buying all those plaques to put in the museum downtown, are, I just asked that, are we funding, helping fund that?
So, that's in a special revenue fund of ours, so these are general fund expenditures, Walk of Fame is in its own little fund, and they fundraise and use city funds as well that they're using for that project.
That's very much in the weeds, I'm sorry for that.
Sorry, it's the point of the budget, right? I'm going to keep moving along here, because we are at 9:55, I do want to provide us a break, but we'll, we'll decide where we want to go, because we're almost at the end of this section. Capital, we have about $1.1 million in debt proceeds, that's going towards vehicle replacements and large capital equipment, including a bucket truck, backhoe, and pothole patcher. The vehicle replacements, we are putting on loans, four-year loans, and then turning the vehicles and selling them at kind of best return value for us, so we started this program about a year ago, or two years ago, and we're working on, you know, keeping that fund rolling, replacing more vehicles in our fleet, having higher quality vehicles in the fleet, but also selling them at best resale value. And in the Pago, there's about $500,000, some things are, you know, multi-gas monitors for the fire department, cloud storage for body cameras for police department, gateway signage for the city, so a variety of things, I won't go into the full list, and we can talk more in that in detail if we want to when we get to the model.
Wait, when?
The model discussion.
When we get to this thing that looks like this, we'll start pushing a bunch of numbers.
Yeah. Debt services increased substantially, and, and this is, you know, reflective of what we've been planning and reflective of what's in our model. The USDA loan for police department headquarters is fully enacted in this budget, it's $522,000 a year, and then we're also planning to pay for half of a limited obligation bond for the fire station, the fire tower replacement, the fire engine replacement, Edwards Park, and City Hall, and ops renovations, that's about $305,000 for the payment in FY '23, the full year payment would start in FY '24.
Oh, that's the, that's the half part.
Yep, and then we have half of a regular financing for vehicles, again, the same plan we've been rolling with, for about $122,000 in this budget, the full cost will start in FY '24. We had a, just to note, we had a call with the local government commission yesterday to talk with them about our proposed law financing, we didn't see any red flags, and they've kind of given us the general nod to go ahead and start, you know, working through that financing process to come to them in September for the full approval. Questions there? Okay. Fund balance scenarios, we present this in the memo, really, from a worst case, a 97% spend and 103% revenue collection, we would lose $306,000, or appropriate $306,000 of our fund balance. At our historical average, we would put back $238,000, and best case scenario, what happened last year in FY '21, we would put back almost a million dollars, I don't think that's going to happen, but the economy's done stranger things, so ultimately, my estimate for FY '23 is $27,000, so it's a mix, we're saying that we're going to spend 95.5%, and our revenues will come at 103%, so we'll see what actually happens, but that's kind of where we're, we're leaning at the start of this next budget year, and that's our estimate. So, good shape, no tax increase, and the bottom line, we're thinking it's going to remain flat, and our fund balance won't increase dramatically or decrease dramatically, so we, we feel everything in this budget is sustainable for this year, and it puts us in good shape. The next discussion we need to have is on future years. Another way to look at this is just our fund balance in total, an available fund balance, I'm not, I'm going to flip through these quick, because we'll see it all on the model, and then our available compared to the LGC requirement, and then we're going to get into this. So, at this point, it's 10 o'clock, I think it's probably a good time to take a break, and then we can come back and kind of dive back in, so let's, 15 minutes, start back at 10:15. Thank you. And dive into the model, prior to starting, I would just request everyone to click those mics on, so Allison doesn't have to come out of her little hideaway. So, every year, as we've done for the past couple of years now, we look at our general fund model, again, this, this model tries to take into account all the best guesses we have for where we're going from an expenditure and revenue perspective, breaks it down off of prior year audits, and projects what might happen going forward. What we have is our dashboard page, which shows all our key indicators, we also have our inputs page, which shows everything of importance that's in the model, we'll run through each of these, and essentially, we can toggle things on and off and see where we end up at the future. So, at the highest level, with the current budget, with no proposed tax increase, you can see in FY '23, we are at 25.4% of available fund balance, our goal is to be above 25%, so you see we're in good shape there. You can see also this reflected over here on this graph, with the red line being our kind of bottom line, green bars being our available fund balance, and gray adding up to our total fund balance. You can see the amount above or below the minimum we are by year, so starting '21, we were $720,000 below our fund balance requirement, we think in '22, we'll be $640,000 above, and just above in '23, you can see how that relates to the percentage. And then in future years, we see kind of a drop off, and we'll talk through these red boxes, starting in '25, as we go forward. The last chart on the bottom right shows our net earnings, so you can see what our net earnings does to our fund balance and what it does to our availability requirement. And lastly, I'd want to highlight our debt service to operations ratio, this is a level that we set at 15%, this is something that lenders and public rating agencies will look at when gauging our affordability to issue additional debt, so you can see we're below there, we get close out in year, let's see if that's '26 or '27, FY '27, we're at 14.5% of our debt service to our total operating expenditures. And lastly. And lastly, one thing to keep in mind also is our USDA loan has requirements built into it for coverage ratios. We are tracking that, we don't see any issues that we might have yet. I don't want to overspeak because Mr. Finance Director is in the room and he has to report on it quarterly, so we will be watching that and talking through that as we continue on this track and we might add it in as a key indicator as well here. But it is being tracked on some of the back pages, much like the revenue bond covenants that we have.
Can I ask a question? On the bottom two right graphs, I apologize, on the Y, the left.
Yes.
What is the 0.51, does that mean percent above or below or?
Dollars and millions, I should have that labeled.
Dollars and millions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So ultimately, that, that's our current layout right now. When you look at what's in here, and I'll zoom in on this, we've got all of our major projects, including everything we talked about earlier, our vehicle replacements and our equipment replacements, all the way into Edwards Park and including the fire department aspects, is all built into the model for FY '23. In FY '24, we only have a vehicle replacement built in. FY '25, we have Dogwood Park built in, and in FY '26, we have Station 3 built in. So those are in the model. On the right here, you can see the new positions. If it says display only, I've already included it in the model, so I don't need to toggle it on and off because it, it messes the model up, so I'm just putting it on display purposes. This is all the positions that are in the recommended budget. And then also, in FY '24, we built in two property maintenance workers to complete the crew that we're kind of starting this year from a property maintenance crew leader position. Additional one-time capital and operating revenues or expenditures are in here, including our SAFER grant year three, that's about $500,000. Transfer, and this was FY '22, transferred to the parking fund to stand that fund up and our Pago capital outlay at $1 million. In FY '22, we're going to try to transfer additional money into our exterior projects for City Hall, since we do know based on our current outlook that FY '22 is going to be a good year for us from a financial standpoint. So taking that money now and transferring it while we have it to do that project. Leading into FY '23, we have a revenue one-time contribution of $1.25 million of ARP funds. Pago is at $1.65 million, or just capital in general, that includes our loan, not just Pago. SAFER year four, estimated at $627,000, that is, we will be paying 65% of the firefighters that we hired on the SAFER grant, starting now, and that ends in March of '23, and then we start paying 100% of those firefighters, so that cost is built into the budget. We also have Pago capital in FY '24 of 1.25, another tranche of $1.25 million of ARP revenue coming in as a revenue source for FY '24. And then lastly, in FY '25, finishing out some of the City Hall transfers that are needed and Grove Street sidewalk city portion, that's an NCDOT project, we'll want to talk through that because that might be something we discuss moving forward. Additionally, on recurring, so that's all one-time, that happens once and it's built in for each year. Recurring standpoint, we have the paying class options beginning in '22 and '23, about $1 million total. The final start of the SAFER grant in 2024 moving forward, $850,000 will come on fully general fund. And then Pago at 1.5 million. We also have some other options in here to just demonstrate what course and sales taxes, occupancy tax and other motor vehicle fees, these are some other revenue options, two of them not really available and one available and it gives us about $70,000 for every $5 of fee. And lastly, we add in our major developments that we know are going on. One thing I would note is we are tracking these from a planning perspective and where they are in the pipeline from construction approved or, or in the planning phases. And right now, we're building in all of those that are approved and have permits in hand. So you can see Southgate, Hawkins Point, White Pine Villas, Washburn are all turned off. And another item to note is you can see the industrial projects are listed, but they are in, in future years. With those industrial projects, if they end up meeting their incentives sooner, meaning if they have their assessed value greater than what they've agreed to, they still get that paid back, but the incentive cap doesn't change, so they might come on the tax books earlier than these dates, but being conservative, that's where we've put those projects. And then lastly, you can see the penny equivalents of each project, so you can see project independence is about two and a half pennies on the tax scroll in 2033. So it's taking into account what the value per penny is in 2033 and capturing what that would be. $962,000 today of tax value is approximately like three to four pennies. And you can see other options. So we know this dashboard is a little scary, they're, you know, we're in the red, we don't like to be in the red, and we're, we're just below, you know, we're, we're at 400,000, 800,000, we get to 2 million, but that's, that's pretty far out, that's five years away. I'd take that one with a grain of salt. But to give us some, some peace of mind, some things that we can toggle in here and what John and I have talked through is dropping our Pago back down, this is an easy thing to, to adjust from a, a budget perspective, putting it, that at $1 million. Let's say, you know, this is a little further out, let's say we want to look at Grove Street, oh, and I just changed it in the wrong spot, so let me go to actually where it makes sense to change it. There we go. If you look at Grove Street, that might be a project that, as a, as a board, when we start talking about projects and priorities next year, it might be the time we start talking about a general obligation bond for transportation improvements. So I, I would say we can probably comfortably turn that off for now, knowing we'll address that in the future. And lastly, just to emphasize, this is not saying that we are going to do this and the board should, you know, not base their decision on this model, but if Washburn were to be on, right, if, if some sort of development came online, those three toggles changes the model pretty significantly. So I feel that we're in a pretty strong place. Our FY '23 budget is sustainable. FY '24, we have to have a good revow and recapture at least 20% of any revenue increase. And I think moving forward, we would have the options to discuss future projects and where we want to go. So with that, I'll pause, I know, I know not all the projects are in here, not all the positions are in here. At this point, I'd really just open it up to questions and discussion from council.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question, I mean, that is, so in terms of recapture of revaluation, I think that's the correct way to
Sure.
... that. If we were to use our current tax rate as our example, next year, what would that mean as far as, assuming that spending remained as is in this budget?
Right.
To, to pay for this budget, or what we anticipate for next year's budget, I guess is a better way to put that, what would we have to add in our property taxes to get the recapture that you're discussing?
Right, and so it's a state law calculation and we've got to estimate a couple of things in there, but making those estimates, it would be about a seven cent tax decrease to get to revenue neutral, so about seven cents, again, based on estimates. We will know once the tax rolls come out next year.
That's what we're anticipating.
Yes. Hopefully it will be better. I think one thing to take into this is the model is slightly conservative. If you remember last year, we presented that we would need a three cent tax increase this year, that's something we, and we did not have paying class built in, so we were able to add paying class and eliminate a three cent tax increase. So take some of this with a grain of salt, that there is conservative nature to the model.
With that in mind then, with our best guess, I shouldn't say guess, sorry, I apologize, best estimate, under the ideal circumstances, rather than seven cents, what do you think?
So I think we talked about this a little bit, but I think it's more in the four to five cent range, so, yeah, if things come in at a best case scenario.
So in other words, based upon this year's budget and what we're looking at for next year, absent, starting to play around with toggles and all kinds of tranches and things like that up there. We're, we're looking at next year, at baseline, having to increase tax, property taxes that is, at, at a minimum, we'll say four cents, and at a maximum, seven cents, still, knowing that revow is still being done, but we're, our estimate's sitting here today.
Yeah, the, the tax rate might like physically decrease, but in reality, it's
I know, I don't mean the
A four to seven cent increase, yeah.
The practical aspect of it, how much more people pay.
Yep, correct.
Which is about somewhere between 10 and 20%?
Yep.
Or maybe 15 and 20%, somewhere like that?
That's fair.
Okay.
So before you changed all those toggles on there, that was assuming that no additional development was coming online?
It included the development that's been approved.
Right, right, right.
And we know some of that might not happen too, so it's
Right.
It really is crystal ball to the
Right.
To a high level, but we know that we're getting, again, if you think back to the property tax assessed valuation slides, we're looking like we're trending into a more early 2000s growth rate level, where development was stronger.
Can you go to that slide, or page, whatever you call this thing, that had the development that she asked about?
Yes.
So on
Here we are.
Yeah, all of those have a date on them, right?
Yep.
So for example, I'll just use Clear Creek, you have that as, that's 2024 fiscal year?
Fiscal year, yeah, that's correct.
Is that what that means?
Correct.
Okay, so that's when we're estimating that much will be taxable, so to speak.
Correct.
Gotcha. So in other words, the budget that you have there is making the assumption for FY 2024 that all of those areas will be available for taxation at those amounts?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I hope they are.
Those are probably pretty conservative too, or, you don't know?
I really don't know. I'd say on all of these, the Cedars Hotel is the, the hardest to
Oh, absolutely.
Down, my estimate on.
Plus, that's also '25, that's not even next year, right?
Yeah, and I've, I think that's really lowballed because that, that's based on multifamily units.
Mm-hmm.
It's very uni, it's not an apartment, right? It's, it's a boutique hotel, I don't know how to gauge that value, so that is low, most likely.
Plus, I mean, just going back to one of your first slides of the day, with regard to, I forget the term for the pipe, but pipe goes in the ground for water, which all of those
Yep.
Need.
Correct.
And that's delayed six months, so once again, we're estimating that those might be available at those times.
Correct. Yeah, that's right.
Probably no chance they'd be any sooner with the current supply chain issues.
Miracles.
Wish I could
Look, man, this is not where I do analyzing, this is just, I do city analyzing, right?
You need a bigger crystal ball, Brian.
And I guess on those that you just had up there, once again, they may not happen either.
Correct, yeah. There's, yeah, there's, I think trade winds blowing either way, we're hoping we're, we're somewhere in a reasonable ballpark. I know future years, our plan, John and I have discussed is coming back and redoing kind of the prioritization, the projects, because right now, we've got a big list of projects, right? We've knocked out the police station, parking deck is under construction, fire station is very close to design, Edwards Park, same, close to bidding and being under construction. Once, we really want to get through FY '23, get to revow, right, get to a, a revenue opportunity, and then come back and say, all right, what, what do we need to be doing? Do we need to be doing a general obligation bond for transportation projects? Do we need to move Dogwood Park up? How, how do we want to move forward in these, these ways essentially? So I know those are of interest, I don't know if there's any discussion that needs to be had on those, those projects.
Oh, and I have a question on parking deck. What do we think is the day you can drive in it and park, not the day, but the month you can park in it?
January of '23.
So January of '23.
Yep.
There was some concrete going in this morning.
There is, I saw that.
So in other words, just looking across the street, if Dogwood were turned to a park, it can't start turning into a park before January of 2023. That's when those parking spaces could be replaced.
Correct.
Right, as far as the parking part.
Yeah.
Can you toggle on that quarter cent sales tax?
Yeah.
I just want to see it.
I will go, I will put on armor with you, we will go to Raleigh and we will, we will, we will fight at the front of the fort.
Look at that.
Look at that.
Yeah, I would, I will, I will go with you, Jean.
I'll go.
Yes.
Let's just, for fun, drop our revow to zero and let's drop our tax rate to like 45 cents. Oh, that's problematic.
That didn't work out too well, right?
Forty-eight.
Getting a little crazy there, Brian.
Yeah, maybe we do 50, but no, no major revow, there you go.
But that was no revow?
No, zero percent revow.
Can we figure a 22% revow, just for giggles?
Yeah. Move this back to 52. Yeah, and that still has the quarter cent sales tax on there.
Okay.
Whoa.
That quarter cent really makes a big difference.
It's huge.
Lot of money.
Debbie, do you understand the quarter cent sales tax question she's asking about?
No.
So let, what, do you want to explain it or?
You guys go ahead.
Yeah, so this is, we can only do this, this is where, there's part of the sales tax directly goes to us, so we don't share it with everybody else, but we can only do it if we're given permission to do it, to, to hold a referendum, I believe, is that correct?
Correct.
We have to give permission to hold a referendum and then the voters would have to vote for it. But unless we're given permission to hold a referendum, if I'm not mistaken, that's correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we can't do it.
And that quarter cent sales tax lobby essentially would bring $2.5 million additional to this community. And there are arguments, right, against sales tax and that it affects the poor, but ultimately, when you look at how that is just distributed, people with a lower income are impacted more at their grocery and that type of stuff, but that is distributed at a slower rate amongst, among the time, whereas when we continue to increase property taxes, that gets trickled down to the renters and it's in a lar, a much larger scale. So, you know, we increase property taxes, the landlords and the bigger businesses are going to still continue to get theirs, like that's just how they work, that's why they're landlords. And so they pass that down to the renters by increasing their rent to $300. And so that kind of jump in someone's monthly expenses is substantial as opposed to, you know, 37 additional cents at the grocery store or, you know, whatever over the course of the month. So it's, it is an increase to people, but to me, it's a, a more gentle increase. And then the other aspect is that it then empowers our tourists to contribute to our services, because they're paying sales tax regularly. And so then instead of just putting all the burden on the people who live here and work here, we're now allowing our tourists to help us pay for things.
And I'll also add, 0.25%, I believe is, on a hundred dollar purchase, that's a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that would mean, on a hundred dollar purchase, that, that only adds 25 cents to the overall cost. So it is a relatively small, very small tax increase that has huge benefits to us, because if I'm not mistaken, we don't have to share this one, we get to keep it.
It'd be direct to the city.
Right, so another challenge we have is, you know, I won't get into all the policy stuff, but a lot of the sales tax that is collected here in this city, we do not get to see, a very large portion of it, because of the way they divide sales tax up, which was a slide we had earlier today. We won't get into right or wrong or whatever, but it's frustrating.
Wrong.
Okay, sure. Yeah, it's just, is that, and of course, there's a debate in, in the general assembly about, okay, people come in from Edneyville to make their purchases here, that doesn't mean that they should get some of the sales tax money. And, and I understand that argument, but it seems like it is heavily weighted to leave our city more than to stay in our city. So us having a quarter cent sales tax dedicated just to us, I think I would have no problem making a strong argument to our electorate that it's well worth the investment and it will not cost the average person but a very small amount on, on items that are sales tax, that's what she's referring to. We just, legislature has to give us permission to do it and we're, our hands, our hands are literally tied on this.
For the city.
Yeah, but it's a huge, huge revenue boost for us that I would argue probably, maybe, I don't know, that we deserve, quite honestly.
I mean, we're all the largest economic driver I mean, we're all the largest economic driver for the county. They want people to keep coming here. We need to keep providing the services that we're providing and the level of experience people are accustomed to when they come to visit. And one way to do that would be
Yeah.
And think about affordable housing, right? Like, the tourism industry is one of the reasons that all, we don't have affordable housing here. And imagine a time where we would be able to take a percentage of that sales tax revenue and put it into a fund where we can then help to fund partnerships and projects to create more affordable housing. You know, we need that money to do other things, but we can do really good things with that money if we could get it.
And the other thing about this particular tax is this is a direct democracy, like the, they'll vote on it. If they don't want it, they'll vote it down. You know, I think we could make a good argument that they should want it. But the bottom line is, this is not us, where the property tax, they really don't vote on, we vote on it. This, they'd get to vote on. So they'd have a say in whether or not they wanted to do it. And that's another great thing about this is it has, it's a referendum that goes with it. Just got my mind just totally out of whack now.
That's great discussion. Really is.
Thank you. Let me know when we're planning our trip.
Jerry's the only one with the minivan and really, you know, we need a minivan to
We need a minivan, yeah.
You got a people, you got a people carrier, too.
Yeah.
We can, we can ride Raleigh bus on the back.
So at this point, are there other things that we need to be aware of that we should change coming into the June meeting? Because at this point, this is where we've got the budget set from a general fund standpoint. We still have some more funds to go through, right? But this is what we're going to be delivering to you and making public mid-May in the budget document. Is there anything we need to to update at this point?
Well, one of the things I guess I would like to at least have a discussion with on council is, you know, by adopting the budget as written, we know we have somewhere, maybe not the number four or seven cents, but equivalent in value of a tax increase coming next year. Is there any appetite to finding some way to address that now? Rather than wait one year for a huge jump that we know is coming? And we're all, I'll throw in is, to me, that's a large tax increase for one year, one year over the next. And I know for, for, you know, members of our community, they're just going to pay it, no big deal, keep moving right along. For other members of our community, you know, effectively a fifth, a ten to twenty percent increase in taxes is real money, especially as inflation doesn't appear to be subsiding. Who knows what the Fed will get done by next year at this time, but whatever it is, it'll be, it'll be later than it should have been. And in addressing that, should we, so, you know, two options I've thought of is, do we need to look at something up here to play with, to toggle something off of this that lowers that amount? Or um do we need to address some of that this year with the idea that it's not all bang at one time next year? I'll just throw that out for discussion. I did not coming in today with a project that should be mixed, and I can tell you, I, Brian can tell you. He and I have spent a lot of time on Zoom this week looking at this of of like, okay, we'll just get rid of this. And it's really hard to find a project that says, nah, we're just not going to do that, you know? The only pot of money that really is a pot of money, literally, is the capital
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay, which is not designed for a specific project. It's just designed for a capital project, so we don't have to list every dump truck and everything in there. Just like, we know we're going to spend this much for cars and things like that.
Why don't you make some suggestions? I'm open to hearing them.
Okay. Well, I'll start, okay, now I got to figure out which page I'm on. Oh, here we go. Sorry, this right here. So I mean, I, I need to ask, you know, Brian and John, but um so I believe it says on here, the pay-go for next year is one point six million. Is that correct?
That's, that's our current, so that's our current capital outlay spend for the proposed FY twenty-three budget. One million dollars of that is tied to debt proceeds. So the vehicles and large equipment are all of that. So you've got five hundred thousand really of pay-go that is movable. We've moved that a pretty good bit since the start of the request, but there's probably some items we could dive into. But you're, you're talking, you know, a hundred thousand dollars maybe.
Okay.
But two hundred and fifty thousand of that pay-go of that six hundred and fifty-one thousand would be a penny.
Correct, but pennies are recurring, right? Pay, capital is one time.
And and then do we have any flexibility on our general fund?
General fund, taxes, expenditures, what?
Well, like the amount of money that is in our general fund.
The fund balance?
Sorry.
There we go. You're good. I was like, where am I? Fund balance, we have expecting to be about eighty-three thousand dollars over the minimum requirement.
Okay.
So any cut to that would be really cutting it closer than we want?
Getting very close.
We don't want to get that nasty ground
No.
local government commission.
And then what's the next year?
The next year is, well, seven hundred and sixty thousand. Keep in mind, I've dropped pay-go capital to a million dollars. And I have turned off the Grove Street project, assuming that would be potentially bond funded. And I have added in Washburn. So that's all. I can undo those really quick. You want to see it from the worst case?
Will you do that again?
Yep.
Yeah, please, please take Washburn out for purposes of this discussion.
Grove Street's back on. There we go.
What, what we have in front of us obviously is different than what you're looking at, what we just played with, right?
No, this should be pretty close.
Okay.
At this point, yeah.
So that above, above, or above, below minimum doesn't look like it changed much with what you did. Did it? Because it doesn't look like it really moved. Because it was point oh eight.
Yeah, you're talking
Twenty-five changed.
Yeah.
Twenty-five changed.
So it was like further out where there were changes, not in the next
Yeah.
essentially two fiscal years.
So the, so the, so I guess on, on here, on my piece of paper, the pay-go that you changed was for twenty-four, yeah?
Yeah, future years. Right now
Mine says one point two five. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, one point two five. And you put it at one point five. Is that right?
Just one, one million.
Just one million, okay.
Um, yeah, what I'll say is FY twenty-three right now is pretty well set for the proposal. We can certainly modify it. Right? But what's the desired outcome you're looking for for FY twenty-three? Versus are you, are you really trying to get the revale down in FY twenty-four? I'm trying to understand where we're, we want to go with that. Or are we trying to fix the future years?
I think his goal is to look at lessening the blow of what we are perceiving to be happening in the next
In FY twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so that, that would
Exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, that would require dropping this one point two five down to like, let's just say, seven fifty. That would be pretty tight. That's a key toggle we could work with there. Yeah, and
Sure, that twenty twenty-three just never changes. Everything else, those are bound.
Let's do fifteen percent just for fun.
What number are you playing with now?
The revale. Yeah, that's not good, but we'll go ahead and look at. So essentially fifteen percent revale, we're still at about the same
But we know it's not going to be fifteen percent.
No, 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 no. That's, that means how much of that we must basically tax people on.
So if it's twenty-five percent, we got to keep fifteen.
So fifteen percent is lower than twenty percent.
Okay.
We'd still be good, but then obviously our future years, we need to address.
But that's also still a development.
Turned off.
Untalked, yeah.
Correct.
So what, what did we just?
You brought down that pay-go to seven fifty?
Right.
Correct.
Was there something else you clicked?
That was it.
Well, and here doesn't account for a tax rate increase on the chart.
We're just staying at fifty-two.
But we were just talking about
Right, but, but
doing four cents, right?
Right, now, well, what that means is, yeah, so next year, when they have the revale, if we leave it at fifty-two,
Gotcha.
it's effectively a tax increase.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, that's why the cents part throws it off, because if we leave it at fifty-two, it's the same tax rate, but it's definitely a tax increase.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking we were doing the tax increase on top of the revale, which would be insane.
No.
No, no, it, it means
In reality
It means if we don't lower taxes
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
if we don't lower taxes, it is a tax increase.
Yes, yes.
Brian, figuring a twenty percent revale?
Yes.
What would be roughly the revenue neutral tax rate?
Seven pennies below. So that's where Jerry's getting, seven.
Forty-five?
We're at fifty-two, it'd be forty-five.
Okay, wow.
So if we get up to, if we get to forty-five percent
That's a long time ago on council and it was forty-five.
Yeah.
Wow.
Those types of things, so. Ultimately, our first two years right now, we are in good position. It's understanding what we have to do, either growing or cutting back on, which again, capital.
But that pay-go that you toggled
Yep.
is flexible.
Yes.
And if you figure it conservatively now
Yes.
and things do tend to be better, then that money can get plugged back in.
Correct, yeah. That's what we do with it.
And we're still being a little bit more, like, allowing a little bit more of a buffer for planning for tax rate next year by doing that.
Yeah, so if you did pay-go seven, rather than seven fifty, like five hundred thousand next year. Or whatever, wherever it needs to go on the thing up there.
Yeah, so that pay-go that year is only going to affect FY twenty-four.
I got it.
And FY twenty-four is already okay. You could, you could just drop your percentage more on the revale essentially. But the revale is long-term, remember that. So the revale is paying those future years
Right.
as well, and that capital pay-go is only a one-year change.
Right, and I think, so the idea there is, okay, if we know the taxes increase is coming, it's not one big chunk next year. It's something that could be spread out over time.
You certainly could spread it out, yeah.
That's the idea, is that it's spread out over time so that people can plan for it, know it's coming, and then all these things that, you know, I mean, we've have, I trust you guys tremendously. We've made predictions, but we just don't exactly know where some of these things are going.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, you have future year needs that get pretty significant, but you can get the, you're still fine in FY twenty-four at a twelve percent revale. So really, the revale is, is a good opportunity to, because no matter what happens with the tax rate, people are going to have significant changes. Some people are going to have a hundred and twenty percent increases in their property value. Some people will have like five. And no matter what happens, you're going to have, people are going to have a significant change every revale year. And that's why it's a decent strategy, in my opinion, to capture what you need for the next four years during that one time. Otherwise, you're raising taxes every year out in the future.
Understood.
Because you, essentially, you would decrease your tax rate and then you'd just be bringing it right back up.
Or you'd leave it where it is and be, and sending it forward
Yes.
if you did revenue neutral. Yeah, I mean, I, I totally understand that.
Yeah.
What, what you're saying is just considering the other economic things that are going on. And considering we haven't got to water and sewer, but there's a, you know, slight water increase.
Correct.
So just slapping that on people, and I, I do kind of mean using the verb slapping it on them, because that's what it's going to feel like to some folks, is a bitter pill to swallow, considering what's been happening in, I mean, I hate to throw COVID into this, but, you know, that's still what everybody's still going through, trying to figure out what the heck has happened in the last two years.
One thing to keep in mind, right, is part of the theme of this budget is, we've got this year still to get through, right? We got FY twenty-three to, we can watch, we can see what's happening, learn from that, and then really, you don't have to make that revale decision until a year from now. So you've got time and you can, right now, what we've proposed is a sustainable budget.
Oh, no, oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
You can get to FY twenty-four and then really have, you know, we can keep bringing this up, keep showing you where we are as we get sales taxes in monthly and get to a point where you, you're prepared for that decision FY twenty-four. That's our goal, is that FY twenty-four doesn't come as a surprise.
I mean, and maybe a goal for us would be, okay, we need to decide what level of a tax increase we're comfortable with and just tell our budget makers, okay, when you're budgeting, tax increase cannot go over X amount. And then we just have to budget, because, I mean, you guys are good at that. You just have to budget within those parameters. This is all we can, we're willing to handle for FY twenty-four.
And wait till those revale numbers come out, too.
Yeah, well, I mean, that way, it gives literally from today, an opportunity, we're looking at projects and say, well, we know what our, you know, what the policy has been said at, that project there is going to put us over. We're going to have to either change the project, do away with the project, or something like that to meet that, you know, because right now, we're thinking, but if, I guess if we leave this tax year or fiscal year going into next fiscal year, and they have directions like, we cannot afford, or we're not going to ask the residents to afford, that's a better way to put that, a tax increase over X amount, then that's, when you're putting the budget together, those are the parameters. And we'll all have to, you know, be upset together, which is what democracy is all about at times. But, you know.
And what kind of steps could we take as a council to really start talking about the quarter cent sales tax? I mean, we're talking about it, but
Yeah, practically
what is our next step?
Does a General Assembly have to approve it, or is it a local bill? No, it's, 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 you could, first of all, the first step, you could get it introduced as a local bill. But then you just still got to get past the caucus. I mean, a local bill, because you, here's the, we could ask one of our legislators to submit it. You'd have to get both of them to agree to it. But then there's enough, if it started getting positive momentum, there's enough cities in this state. So it basically, it would not be long before it was a statewide bill, give or take.
So you mean, a bunch of other cities got to jump on board with us?
Oh, yeah.
Ahah, it would not literally be just voting on us.
That's what's been happening the past few years.
Yeah, that's what's been hap, so you, basically, and so you might as well, just, it's, so unlike other local bills, like, you know, I don't
Rename the street or something.
Rename the street, whereas you just, if the, your two local folks are on board
Right, they just vote for it.
Go for it.
Yeah.
But now that, this has such statewide, you know, implications, then you really have to get the whole legislature on board, or the majority on board to get it voted. It's harder to do than most typical local bills.
And, and does that mean that, okay, let's just say the City of Hendersonville is the only city in the whole state that wants to do this?
Yes.
They probably aren't going to bring it up for a vote if we're the only city that wants to do it. Like, in other words, if it's just a bill that relates to the City of Hendersonville, because it's only one city, it's just not even going to get out of committee, because, like
Yeah, probably.
Right, in other words, they would want, in essence, multiple municipalities.
Yeah, I mean, to, to get other people to vote, they've said, well, I want to put my city in there, and so it's, it's, it's and it, but it has such a big policy implication that it'd be very hard to get it out of committee. I mean, I, I just think
That's okay, you, you know, I trust you.
I don't care if they say no. I mean, I, if you don't get any, like, opportunity if you don't ask
Yeah.
or if you don't try. And I think, too, like, I think that the climate is maybe shifting a little bit, especially in Raleigh, when you look at the economic impact of COVID and then the travel and tourism industry and the amount of the influx to our state of residents that I think that everybody across the board is starting to see that our services are on the rise, like, cost of living is increasing. And there's got to be some way to dampen that impact on, like, North Carolina residents. So I don't, I mean, you know, maybe it is a good time to start introducing
I think, yeah, a couple of things to think about is, so the short session, we're, we're getting ready to go into the short session this year. Everybody's going to be out campaigning. What I'm hearing is, like, they, they go back like May seventh or something, and they're going to try to be home by Fourth of July at the latest. So the, the opportunity of getting this moved in the short session, despite the headwinds that you're going to have with it, in the short session, it's going to be really hard, because they're going to, there's some other things they're going to try to focus on is what I, what I'm hearing, Medicare expansion, maybe medical marijuana, some other things that are going to, that are really going to take up, redistricting, whatever. I don't know that we could get it moved in the short session. We could ask. I mean, there doesn't
So when you say we could ask, that asking, I mean, like, could that we be like, we could ask?
You could adopt a resolution, you know, one of the simple ways is adopting a resolution, asking our delegation to submit a local bill, if you want to go this far
Yeah.
of giving us the authority to hold a referendum on a quarter cent sales tax.
And at this point in the game, we'd still be able to get it on the November ballot, wouldn't we? Is it early enough in the year?
I think so. I think if you got it by July
Right, I think that's what I understand one time we had, and I think it was by July to do all the things you had to do to get it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Well, and I would say this, getting it started this year is getting the ball rolling. Well, and I would say this, getting it started this year is getting the ball rolling for next session. Because ultimately, what we would want it to be on is, if not this November, the following November, to be on the ballot. Because that's when it's time that we need to really make this thing happen, if if we're going to start changing the way we do budgets.
So you could also begin to introduce with Representative Moffett and Senator Edwards. If the, if those two will agree to introduce it, that's, you know, um, you know, I think Senator Edwards may not.
Otherwise, occupy with other things right now, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that Senate, anyway, you've got those two local delegation members that have to, and then you got it introduced, depending if it didn't go anywhere. If it didn't go anywhere, then you would have your new representatives the next year in the long session. But you'll have, definitely have a junior, a very junior, um, House member, because you have a freshman as a, as a House member to get it introduced, so, so.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to send a request to them.
I mean, I don't know, I guess we would have to first write the resolution, and then we'd vote on it, right?
If you would.
I'm in favor of that, yes.
Directing staff to put a resolution on your next Thursday's agenda, how about that?
Yes.
Posthaste, aiming for this year.
Posthaste.
Okay.
Sorry, that's very legal terms.
Any changes for the FY twenty three budget?
Yeah.
Brian's like, this is not at all what I signed up for.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of time, we've got a lot.
You did like the toggle down pay go.
Yeah, we, what I've heard is, is tighten it up, get ready for revow, and I think that's what we'll do. Any specifics?
So there's a couple other positions. Jennifer and I talked about one, a parks person. We've talked about them at least since I've been on the board. I would like to see us try to add a parks person, especially if we're going to be doing this Edwards Park, and we have the Dogwood Park coming, and we're moving the tennis courts. We're doing a lot with parks right now. And then the other thing is, is the ESP is working on the sustainability plan, which has a lot in it. And I think we really need to look at having a sustainability manager, at the very least, a sustainability coordinator. We met with the manager from Boone, the sustainability manager, and the sustainability coordinator from Carboro. And they're, it's situated differently in the, within the organizations, but they've been able to get a lot done with grant wise, and trying to electrify fleet vehicles, and a lot, doing energy audits, and so all of the stuff that's in our sustainability plan that I don't really want to put on our existing staff, because you guys are already really stressed on doing, you know, all the things that we're trying to get done. And so I personally would like to see us, I would push for a sustainability manager, but if the board doesn't have the appetite for it, um, I think at the very least, doing some sort of, John and I talked about a combo position with another business, a position that you guys have put in here, or looking at a coordinator position within the planning department, which would also fulfill something that Jerry had brought up before about having, because a lot of the residents' concerns are around environmental concerns, this person would be going through the plans and saying, here's my thoughts on this.
So I'll give a budget answer, then I'll turn it over to John for the more colorful answer. So if we wanted to add two positions, depending on the function, right, where they would impact the budget, we would need to scale back on other positions that we've put in here, because they are, when you add a position, it's, it's every year cost, you don't go back on it historically. So if we added two positions, my recommendation from a budget perspective is we need to peel back to other positions that have been added.
If, okay, so, it'd be awesome if there was somebody who had a working knowledge of sustainability and the environment and recreation. Is there a way that the, that could be combined? Uh, recreational, sustainability?
Yeah.
Trunch.
Yeah.
Trunch.
Well, the other one we talked about was the compliance manager could also be sustainable. I think there's a way that you could work sustainability into another position. Eventually, I foresee it being its own position. But they have the opportunity to apply for other grant funding and things that we may be missing out on. Or, you know, they could spearhead the effort that we have in water and sewer, trying to change out lead pipes. Like, there's so many things that the sustainability person could maybe take off the backs of other positions.
Isn't it, you said compliance officer, does that, is that what we call in the zoning?
So this, this is, this is a little bit different. What you're going to see in the water and sewer fund budget, you're going to see the, uh, we're going to request an addition for, um, in our environmental comply, I, I don't know what the term, what we're calling that position is, environmental complancer. And that's what Lindsay and I talked about in, uh, because we have, we currently have one position now, but this is dealing with grease, fats, and oils, um, working with industry to, um, what they discharge into the sewer system. Gracie currently serves in that role, and we're proposing to add a second person in that environmental side. Basically, looking on the utility side, looking for everything Lindsay just mentioned, lead pipes, the, the whole compliance piece of, of meeting the Clean Water Act and things like that. So that is, you know, Gracie currently is the ESP staff person. We've got a proposal, or in the proposed budget, adding a second person. That's a possibility that doesn't handle the recreation piece. I am a little bit, so giving my take on, I am a little bit intrigued about how that position may fold into community development. And so I'm going to ask this question, and make sure, is Mark and Tom need to, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, you know, Mark, Mark's in the room, and Tom's in the room. You know, when you say recreation, are you somebody to do the planning and the grant writing and those kind of things? Is that what you're saying, or do you feel like this is more of a program, boots on the ground, what do you, or?
So if I recall, we had kind of a discussion about that, and we were not in, we were not interested in in, in increasing programming essentially, because a lot of those would be duplicated, and we don't want to duplicate services that are already offered by the county. But we have a lot of passive opportunities and passive parks. We talk repeatedly about pocket parks, you know, improving the ones that we have, um, and I think that that could be managed by someone who could then help to oversee what is going on in those parks. How can we improve them? Working with stormwater restoration and, you know, stream bank restoration, I mean, Patton Park is still a disaster with, like, flooding, and, you know, are there ways that we can have somebody do those things? But again, I think a lot of that comes into the sustainability's piece, too, when we're talking about stormwater runoff, and, you know, looking at enzymatic processes for fats and, you know, those types of things, you know. I kind of see all of those things directly related.
Okay, so based on what I just heard, you may be able to create one position, um, and, you know, where I just said, community development, based on what Councilmember Hensley just said, and I think Councilmember Simpson was nodding, if that was kind of some of the goals, it, it may make sense for that to be a, a, a public works position within public works to work, because let me, I'll tell you why, because we have, um, under, under Mark and Tom's leadership, you have building maintenance, um, which looks at, you could do, you talked about energy audits.
Energy audits, yeah.
That would be where that goes. In addition to that, if we're looking to make improvements to buildings, adding solar panels and, you know, those kind of things, that would be a project that would most likely fall under public works, also under Mark and Tom, and Tom director, Mark, over parks. Um, if you're looking at, you know, even though we have a stormwater program, the parks fall under Mark as as far as park maintenance, and who's responsible watching the parks or managing the parks. So, um, you know, we haven't talked about that. But to me, um, that may make the most sense to put it within the public works division, where they are really focusing on, you know, solar panels, um, working with Mike Huffman on stormwater, where do we put, um, does it make sense converting some of our asphalt to paving, permeable pavers? Does it relate to, you know, energy audits? And then also, the park piece, right, and what do we do to really focus on grant writing and doing parks and those things? Like I said, we haven't talked about that, but, you know, you know, I don't want to put these guys on the spot, but it seems like that may be where you were going.
I think the bang for our buck with that position, too, like, being able to bring in more funding for our parks.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then the environmental sustainability piece, which is essentially, in the long term, creating more economic sustainability for the city. But then with the parks, you know, there are a lot of opportunities in our community for, um, you know, additional tourism, and those tax dollars and monies coming into the community when we have improved and, you know, functional parks as well.
Plus, I'll add, we're not even, we're not even talking about Acusta.
Yeah.
But having someone that can help us get some money from somewhere to help with what is going to be our responsibility as far as the end of the trail, which we don't even have on here yet, but, I mean, I think everybody would agree, we, we need to do something at the end of the trail for parking and things like that.
So I don't hate the idea of combining somebody working with parks and sustainability, because parks are a portion of sustainability. My concern would be, we're giving this person a lot of lofty goals, and are we setting this person up for success? Because we don't want to give that, hey, you're going to work on parks, and we also want you to work on sustainability for the whole city, and then them fail, because we've essentially given them too much to do. So, I mean, I understand where we're at from a budget standpoint, and we really need to get to next year to see where things are going. I, if we would do this combo position, I would like us, as we're looking into the future, separating those positions where they're going to need somebody to help them, or, you know, I just am concerned that there's a lot for this person to do.
You were talking about already, though, requesting an additional position with water.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think could take some of that off of this position, or at least being.
That's true. They could work together.
Those seem like some shared.
Oh, yeah, and, and I'll say, a couple of things I'll say is, you know, this, this would get the ball started.
Yeah.
Um, I think it would give public works some help, I think.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
I think it's a good start, and we need to start somewhere.
And, and I think we'll be able to show you that this, at the end of the meeting, we were kind of waiting to the end, um, we'll be able to show you that the sustainability mindset is starting to grab hold, um, on our staff. Um, and we've got some projects that I think are going to really start picking up speed, I think you'd be pretty pleased with. That, it's, it's kind of like we're changing the cultures, like the whole service excellence, and it's, it's kind of happening, so we can show, we'll show you some things. But I think, you know, if this is where the council wants to go, by adding an additional person, we'll be able to shift some things around and, and expand, um, how we focus on parks and sustainability. Because it may end up being, um, because, like I said, we've not talked about this. It may end up being that, um, we end up just focusing on, um, one person, just to focus on parks and parks development. And in sustainability with that new person, there may be somebody else in the organization that has time to do. So I, if, if you wanted to put that one person, I think we could find a way to accomplish, because I've been wanting to improve our staffing with, with our ESP and our tree board, um, in a way, that they do a lot of similar things, and, um, they're needing more and more, um, staff time. And so, um, this may be an opportunity to, for us to sit down as a team, being public works, um, and administration, to talk about how the staffing and how we can move forward the goals of the city council, as well as those two boards. And it may not end up being sustainability parks, it may be parks and then sustainability and somebody else, so.
Yeah, which I think, getting the ball, my goal for this year is, let's get the ball rolling.
And does that mean adding this half-full position for this fiscal year?
Yes, I would like us to do that.
John, I think there's existing levers that we can push and pull on, and we can bring you back the budget that includes that additional position.
Sweet.
So I have a question, because you keep asking us any more questions about, so, so for FY twenty three, because that's what you keep asking about.
Yes.
If we were to, I don't know, cut something out, all that would do is create our, increase our fund balance.
Correct.
For leading into next year.
Correct.
Right, okay, so in other words, that creates savings now for next year.
Correct.
I don't, I don't mean it like it's a, 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 not an important thing, but that's, we're talking about basically cutting something out and increasing our fund balance, so that point oh eight goes to something higher than that for next year.
Correct, yeah. We, and I think, I feel I've heard really good guidance that we can get you a good budget for FY twenty three here.
So let me ask a practical question, and that is, leaving here today, we do have a mid-May meeting at some point, don't we?
Yes.
Mid-May, right.
Or whatever it is, the second, the workshop meeting, yeah, not literally the middle of May.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, so if, after we, you know, toss these around in the brain and the noodle works with it a little bit, I suppose we could discuss something at that meeting before the June adoption, if necessary, like, in other words, this idea that, okay, we've decided we, we want to cut this out and increase our fund balance for next year. We could tell you, could we tell you that at that meeting, and it'd be still able to work for the June meeting?
You can tell us that at the June meeting. You can change the budget right before adoption if you want. The intent, though, is that, uh, the manager by law is presenting a recommended budget ten days prior to that meeting for the public to know and be able to view, comment on, and then, at that point, it's yours, it's the public's document to do with what they please.
Right, so in other words, other than this position, which you, you've just described the way to get that in.
Yeah.
We're really thinking about, okay, do we want to cut anything out that will increase fund balance going into next year?
Right, and I don't think you necessarily need to increase fund balance at this point.
No, no, I'm just saying, that would be.
That would, was what would happen. If you cut something out, you either add something else back in, or it's just going to improve the end of your outlook.
Right, I'm just saying, though, at this point, we're not asking for a tax increase. The budget is funded, potentially, we think a way to fund this.
Correct.
So if we were to play with it in anticipation of next year, it would be, well, a way would be, okay, we're going to cut something this year to increase fund balance, so we can handle what's coming next year.
Yes, I, I, the only thing I want to mention, Jerry, is that fund balance is just a one-time thing. A lot of these.
Well, no, no, I get it.
Considering are year over year, so really, the tax rate is the key funding.
No, 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 I, I totally get that. I'm just saying that if we add something to the budget, that's a whole nother, that's more of a headache.
Oh, absolutely.
Taking something out of the budget is just, okay, we'll just take that out.
Correct, right. It might be a headache for our departments.
Yeah, because we would, we, we would, you know, what you, the way you're going to do that is, you're going to take, you're going to take a capital, you're taking capital.
Right, that's the one, you just don't buy something.
Or you don't put a solar panel on a building, right? So, I mean, that's the type of stuff.
That's the kind of stuff you're doing, because, because really, when you're talking about positions, it's re-recurring, it's, it's going.
I, I get it, I get it. I'm just saying, otherwise, I don't know what to say to you right now, other than, um, I mean, if we're not going to attack any of that tax increase this year, then I think we've agreed that we need to figure out what's the number for the next year, and then we need to tell you guys, this is the number.
Yeah.
And maybe that's what we need to think about for June, so that, you know, as soon as this one's adopted, going into the next one, we need to start working on this.
So, as the manager, I'll throw out, you know, I'll throw the hand grenade in the room, I mean.
Yeah, let's go.
Why not?
I mean, the other option, you know, this is not where y'all are going to want to go, but I'll, I'll, let me throw the hand grenade. I mean, if you're worried about that, I mean, you could raise the, the rate one or two pennies this year to not do as much next year. I mean, that's, that's, that's the other option you have. I mean, that's not where you were going. I don't know that anybody, anybody's happy about that, but I would throw, that'd be the other option, is the, is the, you know, spread it out on the front end versus spreading it out on the back end.
Well, that would be the only, for me, if you're going to look at a reason to raise it one cent, is simply for that reason.
Yeah.
Right, so that's why I brought that up. Um, I'm not going to vote against the budget if it doesn't have a tax increase in it.
Yeah.
I just want to be, uh, well, I mean, we're all being honest with the, the residents, like, this is what's coming. I don't think it's a bad strategy to add a cent with this, knowing that a tax increase, like, I don't think there's any way to avoid a tax increase in FY twenty four once, other than some very wealthy person gives us an million dollars a year for the rest of their life. Other than that happening, we know it's coming. So if there's, let me ask this question then.
Brian.
Or John. On June the second, at our meeting, if we decided at that meeting that we wanted to raise tax rates one cent, I guess we could do it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, anyway, that, that's just another, you know, we, we talked expenditure cuts, and we know there's things still down the road that you want to do. Um, and because ultimately, you know, this is the long game. You know, ultimately, you know, we're, the way it's set up, and, and I love this model, is we are looking five years out, and we know there's lots of projects. So you just, how you want to space things out. And, and things never occur the way we think they're going to occur. They never, I mean, just from a, just from a timing point, just from timing, look, look how long it takes to get a project from start to finish. Um, so, you know, so things do move, but I, I just want to give you, make sure I said all the options that are out there that you have that. Um, you could look at on the back end, you, you know, wait to revow. The revow, you could make that decision, or you could do a little bit on the front end. And, and so, I don't, just, just food for thought, so.
I'm not opposed to a penny, but I would, I need to, I need to marinate.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I understand, I totally get it, yeah.
I just.
And I think, another thing too, you know, when we did the safer grants, like, whenever the first safer grants happened, we said right then, okay, in three years from now, this tax increase is coming. I think that's fair with the residents. If we say, okay, this is what's coming, you know, and then if they're really upset, they can tell us about it in the meantime. But I, I think that's being fair with the residents, um, to let them know what's coming.
I think the beauty of that is, as long as we continue to be informative and out in front, knock on wood, we haven't had to do all those tax increases that we've talked about, which is the way you want us to do it.
Right.
That's the reason you're elected, um, is that we give you the bad news, and then hopefully, we don't have to, to implement it. And we ha, we've been, knock on wood, we've been fortunate that we have, haven't had to do that with everything we've done, and we'll continue to do that. But I, I think it's, it's important for Brian and Adam and myself to say, hey, this is the potential, this is the potential, you know, over, what is it? Under-promise and over-deliver, that, that's, so, but, so.
Well, I agree that it's, every day we wait on sustainability is the day we cost our grandchildren something.
Yeah.
So I'm totally in on whatever, starting the ball rolling, whatever that means.
Okay.
We need to start it, uh, make it part, that's just part of what government is about.
Start it rolling down a hill, though. Give it a little extra.
I don't know, we might be, just still want to, they're going to push uphill to start with.
Yeah.
All right.
We have heard that input, and we will get you a revised recommended budget for the June consideration. From this point, I want to cover these really quick, and I'm going to hand it over to Adam. Municipal service district funds, there's no tax increase. You have these financial summary tables in your, uh, packet. You're going to see a spend of fund balance estimated. Uh, these have gone to both, uh, the downtown advisory committees, and, uh, essentially their take, because of, you know, right, sales tax impacts the general fund, it also impacts the MSDs. They did very well through the pandemic. They have a very substantial fund balance. The boards have some direct allocations to spend fund balance on capital. Uh, that includes holiday decor, ollards, uh, electric panels, brick sidewalk, crosswalk improvements, and planter improvements in Main Street. So there's a list of capital items and plaza improvements, uh, a study, or a design for plaza improvements at the depot. So those are all included in these two funds. I'm just being very quick. It's about forty thousand to fifty thousand per fund, uh, and it's a, uh, dedicated, knowledgeable spend of their fund balance. Overall though, these funds are looking good. They don't want to, they think continuing the property tax rate equalization is a goal, but they want to wait until the Seventh Avenue streetscape is online before we continue down that route. I want to just be quick, because I know we've got a lot of enterprise stuff to cover, so. Any questions on Main Street or Seventh Avenue? And that's Seventh. Okay. Uh, parking services, just very quickly, uh, you're going to see a pretty substantial swing of things moving into the startup of the fund. We put a, we're putting a bunch of money in there right now in FY twenty-two. That's going to build up the fund balance. And then in FY twenty-three, we only have a half year of revenue. We're going to spend that fund balance. And then FY twenty-four is really the start of a full year for the parking services fund with all the costs built in. Again, a lot of estimates, we don't have data work off of here. So, general fund is supporting this fund in the meantime and, uh, getting it kicked off the ground. And with that, I'll turn it over to Adam.
We have thirty minutes.
So.
Talk fast.
I've already seen, I've already seen it.
Yeah, that's a.
I saw it on Monday.
That's a, that's a tough act to follow. Uh, um, okay, everybody, so, um, we presented the Water and Sewer Fund budget to the Water Sewer Advisory Council this Monday. We've made some, um, some edits, added some additional information since that presentation. One thing that I do want to point out, you all have a copy of the FY twenty-one annual report in front of you, so that, uh, reports on some actuals, and I have a few key takeaways from that annual report that was led by Drew Finley, um, included in this presentation, so.
If I may quickly comment on this, very well received by folks on the council. They, they really liked this report a lot.
A top-notch.
Yeah, so just, they, they really appreciate it and like it, and it's all good.
Sometimes we try to make the numbers look pretty, so I'm glad you guys enjoy it.
Numbers don't have to be boring.
I try not to be boring too, but, um, so I, I just wanted to start out with, uh, just, just a little background data. So, um, the number of customer accounts and the consumption data we have for, uh, oh, sorry, I'm not advancing on the slides here, um, for FY twenty-one. So these are the actuals that we're working with. Um, we have about twenty-nine thousand two hundred water accounts, about ten thousand one hundred and seventy-nine wastewater accounts. Um, we are billing for, I think that's in billions of gallons, if I'm, if I remember correctly. We're billing for about two billion gallons of water usage and about, um, six billion in wastewater usage each year. Uh, here are some more statistics from, uh, the annual report. So these are all included in that paper document. Um, I'm not going to go through all of these, but, um, just wanted to highlight that there's some, some key data available as far as, uh, what our annual water production is, annual wastewater treatment, uh, the number of lines we're working on each year, and the square foot, and the footage, um, of lines cleaned, as well as the calls per service we're responding to.
Yeah, Adam, can I?
Yes, sir.
I would just, shall I raise the tension to the number of new taps? Look in the middle, there, the middle, the chart, or right, included, you know, a hundred and seventy-four, a hundred and fifty, and then this past year, two hundred and thirty-two new taps. I'm there, so, and that, that just shows the residential development going on in the community. Also there, or, and the, and the meter drop in, the number of meters added. The positive is the water loss ratio has gone down.
John, is your mic on?
Sorry, Al. Um, I'll, I'll point out the new number of water taps, um, as well as, uh, you know, we'll see a pretty dramatic increase, and I expect that to continue. That may double next year easily. Um, and then the water loss ratio went, went down, so, uh, good numbers in those cases. Um, and you can start looking at water production and treatment, um, there. And then the, the square footage on the sewer side, you can see that sewer lines cleared and there, went up substantially. So that means we're inspecting our system, um, at a higher level, which is, which is important. So we'll continue to focus on those kind of things. So just want to point those out for the public.
Nice question for you on the new water taps. Somewhere, is there a, a number that shows how many were like business water taps versus homes?
We don't have that, um, on a current report, but we can.
No, no, does that exist somewhere?
It does.
Okay, good, all right. I'll check with you later.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, going to the next slide, this is just our, um, trend line of our annual water production and wastewater treatment in gallons. So you can see, um, we've progressively increased, gradually increased water production. Uh, the trend line is pretty flat, but it's also increasing here. You know, the key, the keynote is we're seeing more customers, we're getting more commercial industrial industry, there's more residential development, so therefore more water being used in Henderson County. On the wastewater treatment side, one of our key initiatives is reducing sewer ionized, so inflow and infiltration, which is, um, you know, just to summarize it, the key factor there is, is rainwater getting into the sewer system. So, um, as we've, you know, bolstered our wastewater treatment infrastructure and improved some of those lines and done more projects to reduce that ionized, we've actually reduced some of our wastewater treatment each year. So, um, that, that is the, the, the negative trend line there you see with, um, the average wastewater treatment, um, trending down each fiscal year. And, uh, just like Brian, I want to, I want to kick off the financial summary tables by, by saying, you know, these are, these are budgets and estimates, so, um, we're, we're in make-believe land. John, John B.'s got the hard numbers and, and we've got the fun ones, so, um, uh, we've got some, some warning signs up here just to let y'all know that, um, you know, we're, we're taking our best guess and using the best data we can to, to forecast out our budget. And to start, um, you can see, I've laid it out in a slightly different format than Brian, but, um, our recommended budget for the Water and Sewer Fund is twenty-two point six million dollars in appropriated expenditures, uh, twenty-two point one million dollars in revenues, with a five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar fund balance use. So, that's the budget. And then we apply our estimates to give you guys a forecast of what the worst case, uh, historical average case and best case is, um, to end FY twenty-three. So, um, bottom line, not going to hit on the top level revenues and expenditures, but on, on the worst case here, um, we can see that we're planning to spend, um, if, if we hit ninety-seven point six percent of our expenditures and fall just flat of a hundred percent at ninety-nine point four percent of our revenues, we will put, or we will need to use a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of fund balance. Um, applying this historical average, ninety-five point two percent of expenditures and a hundred point seven percent of revenues, we will add six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to fund balance. And then finally, same logic, uh, in the best case, we will put one point, call it four million dollars into the Water and Sewer Fund balance.
With the Water and Sewer, what is that? Do we have a magic number the state gives us for fund balance?
So there's no magic number for this, uh, fund balance from the state. However, um, we've got a bond covenant that we'll discuss that, that creates a, a demand for us to.
So we do have a number?
Yes, yes, there is a target. And that is what we will talk about in the coming slides. But first, I just wanted to hit on the charges for service. As Brian mentioned, you know, um, the revised budget to the recommended budget, which we're calling adjusted in these tables, um, might be a little closer. Uh, but we did, because of all of the changes that happened throughout the fiscal year, want to look at the FY twenty-two adopted, so the budget that was approved and began on July first, and compare that to the July first, twenty twenty-three budget. So, looking at adopted to recommended or adjusted, uh, you can see that, um, we have increased our, um, our bottom line revenues by just over two million dollars, so a ten point five percent increase. And the major revenue source for the Water and Sewer Fund, just to remind you all, is, uh, charges for service. So, uh, Water and Sewer meter fees and Water and Sewer volumetric fees, they account for ninety-five point two percent of the Water and Sewer Fund revenues, which adds stability to the fund. So we can, um, you know, forecast out usage and the number of accounts and things like that that are coming into the system and get a fairly accurate, um, forecast to provide you all each year with a budget. In FY twenty-two, so starting July first twenty-two, we had a fifteen percent rate increase compared to FY twenty-one. And in FY twenty-three, moving forward, uh, this July, we are recommending, um, an average nine point eight percent increase among all the customer classes. And I say average because that's overly simplified, and we do have some slides that'll show you some of the various factors that are going into that rate. Some will see a higher level increase than nine point eight, some will see a lower percent increase than nine point eight, but we can get into that in further detail. Generally speaking, uh, we go through a revenue, revenue bond rate covenant process and rate study periodically. We're going through that right now, actually. But our previous rate consultants recommended, on average, that we increase our Water and Sewer rates across the board by about seven percent each year through fiscal year thirty. So, we're recommending a higher increase this year, and that's because we had not built paying class into the previous model, but we're, we're working through that model, and we've got some additional information again to provide you there. Permits and fees is the next largest Water and Sewer Fund revenue source, so that's things like Water and Sewer taps, um, there's line inspections and other, um, operating revenue that's included in that pot of money. So, um, it's a little more elastic, depends on the lines that are going in the ground, the, the taps that are dropped in, and, uh, the development that's happening across the system. And, um, there is a seventeen point one percent increase in those revenues based on historical averages programmed into the FY twenty-three budget. So I just flew through Water and Sewer Fund revenues in about two minutes flat. I'm going to pause, I'm going to have some water. You guys hit me some, some questions if you got any.
So Adam, a seventeen point one percent increase is based, is simply growth, it's not.
That's correct.
Strictly growth, not, not raising rates, just strictly growth.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that's clear, that's based on the growth that we're seeing in permits and fees.
Yes, sir.
And I will add, um, because it is relevant to this, so at the meeting on Monday, you know, representatives from all the municipalities, I guess the county wasn't there because Androada didn't show up on, on Zoom. They all saw this and are aware of this. I don't, no one, somebody asked a question about the fifteen percent, but there was no like hemming and hawing or anything. So they're also aware of the changes with regard to rates and stuff like that.
That's correct. So, uh, Jerry, getting back to your question about the, the math that governs, governs the Water and Sewer Fund here, so it's not so much about fund balance on the Water Sewer Fund side, it's about our rate covenant. So we agreed to a bond covenant back in twenty nineteen with our first revenue bond, which pledges the Water and Sewer Systems revenue sources as security against any major borrowing that we do. So, super high-level, um, explanation there, can provide more detail if needed. But, um, in that rate covenant, there is a formula that, that dictates that we must meet a certain ratio in, in two different ways. So, um, ratio A, um, you can see that in FY twenty-one, we met that ratio calculation. The minimum you can be at is one. We met that ra, ratio calculation at one point seven two. And what goes into that, so, um, our revenues, so all of the charges for service, permits and fees, plus twenty percent of our surplus fund, so any cash available in the project fund and the Water Sewer Fund fund balance, I'm trying to be easy on the numbers here, has to equal a hundred percent of our current expenditures and a hundred and twenty percent of the principal and interest on the primary debt, which is revenue bond debt. And then a hundred percent on other debt, so vehicle loans, um, items that we pledge security with an asset on. And then, the, um, that, that gives you a subtotal, and you use that subtotal to figure out whether or not you met your covenant. So, ratio calculation B, very similar, but you take out that, that fund balance availability, which is why you can end up with a different number. But it, it's also why we need those rate increases each year, because we're trying to meet, we're trying to make sure our current expenses are covered by the revenues that we're generating. And Adam, I just mentioned that you can find that dashboard on the website if you have any question about what our revenue covenant is. And this is also provided in the annual audit each year. So, because that's such a key financial indicator for the Water Sewer System, uh, we also felt it was reasonable to, to forecast that out. Looking at FY twenty-two, since the year is not complete and we're working with imaginary numbers, we took a best guess at where we think we're going to end up. So, um, to, to summarize this slide, in FY twenty-two, we estimate we're going to get a one point one five nine for ratio A and a one point oh six four for ratio B. And based on our budget and our historical average assumptions for FY twenty-three, and again, this is greater than a year in advance. this is greater than a year in advance, we think we're gonna also meet that ratio by 1.173, and then ratio B by 1.078. So, lots of numbers, any, any questions?
And even though 1.078 is not far from one, that's still a pretty healthy number, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Because 0.078 is, in this world, is a pretty good distance from one.
Right, yeah, we, we wanna be close, but not too close, and we feel like this is a good, 1, 1.064 to 7.8 is a good, good area to be.
Could you explain rate covenant?
Yes.
A little bit more?
So, there's, the bond narrative provided on this slide goes into a little bit more detail, but...
Adam, talk about like bonds in general.
Oh, bonds in general, okay. So, Councilmember Roundtree, when the water and sewer system previous, prior to our revenue bond issuances, was issuing debt, we issued debt on assets. So, if we build a treatment plant, for example, that was an asset that held security to bondholders. So, that asset was used, and you need a security when you go out for debt, and you go to the LGC, and they're like, they, they give you approval to use that asset and issue debt on that asset. Now, with the revenue bond, the, the more secure way to, to do a debt issuance for an enterprise fund is to pledge the revenues of the utility. So, all the charges for service, whether they be meter-based or volumetric, as that security, instead of a building, we, we give all the people who are willing to, to lend us money, the ability to, to change our rates and fees if something should happen and we're not able to make our debt payments. But, we're always gonna be able to make our debt payments, we do all this financial forecasting, we get financial advisors that tell us we're in a good, we're in good shape, and they give us advice on how to run the financial aspects of the system.
So, I'm gonna bring it a little lower for city managers, we're a little slow. Basically, we're making the promise, look, think of a covenant as a promise. We're promised, we've got private investors who are buying our bonds, basically, think about it as on the stock market or in, you know, in, in the banking world, they're buying our bonds, and we are promising them that we're gonna pay our bonds back, plus, we're gonna set aside a certain amount of more money that'll be there to make sure that we can pay the bonds off in the future. That is, that's what those bond covenants mean, is that, that those ratios is we're, we're making enough money to, to pay our debt, and we're looking ahead to make sure we'll have money in the future to pay that. And if we don't pay the debts, then they have the right to come in and pay the rates. So, it's just a promise, especially in say, instead of us using a mortgage, like on the water plant, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to mortgage water lines in the ground, whereas we could mortgage City Hall. It's harder to do that because it's harder to pull li- you know, lines out of the ground is we're, we're promising that we'll raise rates, or we'll set the rates high enough to pay the debt, or they can come and raise the rates. So, it's a big promise.
Thanks, John. Still in budget mode.
That's right.
So, getting, getting past the rate covenants and that, that ratio that we're keeping an eye on here, some, some of the other key factors that come into play with our revenue calculations for the water and sewer funds are, and this one is probably the most discussed, is it's our inside customer versus outside city limit customer rate differential. So, beginning with the FY '21 budget, we decided to phase out the 150% rate differential inside and outside the city. So, this means that with the FY '21 budget, beginning July 1st, 2021, we had a 145% rate differential between our inside city customers and outside city customers for water ser- water service only. This did not affect wastewater. So, continuing forward with that trend and that, that thought that we should decrease that differential 5% each fiscal year until it's equalized, we have recommended a 135% differential in the FY '23 budget. So, I think that was clear. By FY '30, we will have water rates equalized inside the city and outside the city, and the wastewater differential will remain at 150%. And on the next slide, I have a visual that shows what that looks like. So, you can see that, that no rates are decreasing because we have to meet those revenue bond covenants, we're getting financial advisors to, to help us understand what we need to, to finance all the capital that's going into the system. But you can see that the inside city rate, which is the teal line below, is increasing at a higher rate than the outside rate, which is represented by the orange line above. So, here is the 150% differential in '20, here's in '21 where we made the change, and by '30, we will be at 100%. And I just wanted to make this part of the presentation very clear. In addition...
Wait, we did equalize rates?
No.
No, we, we're moving towards it.
You're projected to be equalized by FY '30.
We are, yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were really asking...
There were reports that we did not make any type of...
Yes, and it was also in big bold letters in the memo, so, yes, ma'am.
Just double checking.
Yeah, yep.
Did I miss something? Never mind, okay, go ahead.
So, the, another rate equalization trend that, that's important to highlight within the FY '23 budget is our move from a declining block structure to a flat rate structure for commercial and industrial customers. And I think the easiest way to show you what that means is to, is, is just visualizing it on the next slide, but summary is, we're gonna have a flat block structure fully implemented, beginning with FY '24's budget if trends continue, and that will be in line with what our '27 rate study recommended. So, on this discussion, the commercial industrial cost was on a declining block structure, which means if you were in this 0 to 40,000 gallon consumption area, you were paying the same, you were paying $3 per thousand gallon up to 40,000 gallons. And then, at 40,000 to 200,000 gallons, so the more water you used, the, the lower the rate you paid. So, at, at this rate, and, and the example, you would've paid $2 per thousand gallons after your consumption exceeded 40,000 gallons. And then finally, after you get to the third tier, that, that rate would've gone down to a dollar, a dollar fifty, whatever it was. So, it, it was an economic incentive that was previously used by many water utilities to encourage expansion and business growth. That's not a best practice anymore with water utilities, and what we heard from our 2017 rate study is that most of the major utilities in the state are using a flat block structure, which is what we're moving towards. So, that just means you pay the same rate regardless of how much water you use. And a final additional option is to actually increase and have an inclining block structure. So, the more water you use, the higher the rate you pay, and that, that encourages conservation in the utility. And I would note that our residential customers are, are paying at a slight inclining block structure rate, so. Are there any questions I can answer on that? So, that gets us into our expenditures. And for the FY '23 budget, we are recommending a 2.3 million dollar, 11.68% increase, and the, the majority of that increase comes from personnel. So, as Brian's mentioned in his slides already, the, the largest portion of that comes from the pay and classification study implementation. But in addition to that pay and class study, we also have seven recommended water and sewer specific positions that we've already discussed briefly as well. So, that includes a line maintenance crew, CCTV crew, facilities maintenance position, and an environmental compliance position. So, those positions were, were prioritized and ranked highest among the water and sewer requests, there were certainly more, but we felt that these were the priority going into FY '23, the line crew being a priority, because we noticed a trend in the market where contractors were increasingly raising their rates to complete work, and we felt we could do more efficient, cost-effective work in-house. So, allegorically, we've discussed with some of the water sewer operational folks, and there's a project that's gonna be happening out in the Etowah area, and we believe by using our own crew rather than contracting that work out, we can save about $400,000 in costs by doing the work in-house rather than contracting that work out. The CCTV crew will help out by doing additional inspections, and their, their need is, is brought forth from the additional development that's happening on the system. So, as these developments are going in place, we go out and inspect the lines and ensure they are acceptable to connect to our system, and we are also charging those developers for services, but they are at a very affordable rate, I think. E- even folks who don't need that kind of inspection are, are coming to the city because our rate is affordable, and they are getting other line inspections done as a result of our, our rates being competitive. The facilities maintenance position is going to work mostly on generators, pump stations, the necessary operational pieces of our system, tanks, and other items need to be inspected each week, so we, we make sure we go through the system, and as we increase our infrastructure, we just need more folks to go through and, and make those inspections. And the environmental compliance person is really a protective piece, so they mitigate all the fats, oils, and greases that might end up in the sewer system, which cause major issues. I can't remember how many years ago it was now, but I think Garrett DeMoss or, or maybe Ali Smith made a, a great presentation on fat icebergs or, or something like that. So, they, they had some really pretty pictures that I chose not to include in my slides.
I have never poured the bacon grease down, ever since I saw that, I've never done that again.
Good.
It was highly effective.
I'm sure all the folks at the tree and plant appreciate you for that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
One, I appreciate that we are looking at like just efficiencies in contract work. Is that something that we kind of routinely do, like as far as like as we're growing? Does it make more sense to go in-house as opposed to doing contract kind of work?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Things that we're looking at, and you know, it's, and it all ebbs and flows with cost and those kind of things, but what we've noticed is, you know, a few years ago, we had, we had a construction crew, and, and the leader of that crew chose to take another position, and so we went a couple years and realized that was where we, we had an opportunity to, to build that crew back up, and there's times, especially, you know, when you have a, our system's getting large enough for emergencies and just the amount of overtime that we're paying, and the lack of availability of contractors, frankly, that are out there that we need to build that in-house, and there's an opportunity for, to be able to respond quickly as well as the cost, so absolutely so.
Yeah, and it's uncanny how their rates change with markets, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so, yes, and getting them to show up and those kinds of...
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I, I couldn't think of a better lead into the, the operating side of the water sewer fund budget. So, operating costs are, are increasing a million dollars from the FY '21, or sorry, FY '22 adopted to the FY '23 recommended, and the majority of that increase is due to market factors, contractors, things of that nature. So, chemical costs are increasing, and there are very few manufacturers of the specific chemicals we need. Those are needed at the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant mostly. We've got a major increase to sludge hauling costs, so Councilmember Smith heard this at the Water Sewer Advisory Council, but as a byproduct of the wastewater treatment process, we create this, this sludge, for lack of a better term, and it's all the bugs and things we use to...
They know.
They know?
Oh, yeah.
That's why we're doing the incinerator thing.
Correct.
Right, right, okay.
We had, we had, presented the same thing to them.
Great, you guys are already ahead of me, that's, that's perfect. So, that sludge hauling contract is increasing, and that's based on the price of fuel, so the overall budget needs to increase to, to match our expected expenditures on that, on that side. Fuel's going up, we've all seen prices at the pump, and we're also increasing our utilities budget for Duke Energy and other, other payments. But, on the operating side and related to the biosolids dryer, we have chosen to move forward with the dryer project, so that is expected to be operational in 2026, which is the fully vertical green line here. But this cost analysis shows the red line, the cost of continuing with our existing sludge removal contracts, so this is assuming we see the same contract growth each year, and by 2050, that would cost the water and sewer fund 1.8 million dollars, give or take, which is, is not sustainable when, when you consider the dryer option and what that does for the system. So, we've got two different debt models here, so you can pick or choose one. I, I've picked the SRF, which is the orange line, so we get a lower interest rate on those SRF loans, but you can see that, you know, beginning in, call this, 2027, we'll start paying debt on the biosolids dryer project. It'll cost us about $950,000 that year to get the biosolids dryer completed and start paying debt service, and the price for the debt service is just over $800,000 through FY '45, at which point we complete the debt service payments. And then, at that point, we drop down and just pay the operating, maintenance, and utilities costs associated with that dryer, which are estimated in, in 2050 to be about $230,000. So, 1.5 million dollar difference there to get this dryer project done, significant cost savings for the utility. And you can see around 2032, call that, that is when we hit our return on investment for installing that, that sludge dryer. So, great work to the engineering team, gotta give Adam Stur some massive credit, he's got more information on this than I could ever provide you guys, so if, if more detail is needed there, yeah.
We're gonna try that number.
There's also the opportunity to, to sell the byproduct, but...
I have a question on this, I didn't ask Adam. Why is it not till 2025 that we even get going on this? Why is that?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of permitting and design...
If you start today, all of that, just to get to the point that you can start putting it together.
Yes, sir, yep. And then, also in the operating realm, we just wanted to hit on two projects that we feel are, are critical and have the opportunity to improve some of the, the state of operations at the wastewater treatment facility. So, we are planning to use a direct ARP allocation, which was $5 million for an ultraviolet improvement project and an aeration basin improvement project. So, the UV project is going to create a massive energy efficiency for the system. The existing infrastructure is dated, it's hard to find pieces, and it also uses a higher level of energy than this new, more efficient ultraviolet slut, ultraviolet water treatment piece we'll use, and this is the last piece of equipment that the water, at the wastewater treatment plant runs through before it hits the creek. So, this is very critical, and it will reduce our annual electricity costs. And then, just the second piece, you guys might remember from the wastewater treatment plant study, there was an aeration basin that had a slightly bowed wall, so they're gonna build up another wall, anchor it to the existing, and, and fix that issue with that ARP money. with that ARP money. And those items bring us into a capital discussion. So starting with Pago, looking at the FY22 adopted budget compared to the FY23 recommended, you can see that we have actually reduced our capital by $247,000, which is about a 19% decrease. So we use this to help balance the budget and offset some of the costs for the pay-in class study, but we also made sure to include the pieces of equipment that were absolutely necessary to keep the fun going. So in here you'll notice there's equipment for the new construction crew, there's some work to generators and transfer switches. We have some vehicle lifts so we can maintain our equipment, some sewer assessment tools and general other equipment that total just over a million dollars. And the final piece of the water sewer and fund expenditures for FY23's debt service. So we've got $3.2 million of debt service, which is a $4,000 increase from the current year adopted to FY23 recommended. $2.9 million of that is for payments on existing debt. So we issued debt on all of the projects listed in this table at various points historically. So the last project on this list being the Brightwater SRF and the most recent being the revenue bond that we just issued in January. Going into FY23, we're recommending two new debt issuances, one a 2023 revenue bond and we will also begin payments on a fourth and ash SRF project. So the final piece to note here on the FY23 debt service, we, or sorry, the FY22 debt service, we will pay off a $681,000 payment for a wastewater treatment plant SRF loan. So that debt service will not be carrying forward. And FY, and next year in FY23, we've recommended the following projects for a revenue bond, which will total about $8 million. So we've got some Fleetwood or Floral Park area water improvements to bring fire flow up to the top of Floral Park. We have the Apex Project land acquisition. So the engineers wanted to use a cool, secret economic development name for one of their property acquisitions, so we went with Project Apex. We've got some dredging at the North Fork Reservoir, which is one of our major water sources. So really high quality water coming out of there, we just have to go in and do some maintenance to that water source. We have a factor truck that is used to go out and clean sewer lines to make sure our lines are operational and good shape. A water treatment plant expansion to provide additional capacity on the water side, some stream bank improvements to protect our sewer infrastructure, a residuals covered building for additional storage that's needed at the water treatment plant as we continue expansion. And finally, because the market is crazy, put a budgetary contingency in there.
Yeah, at this point, I know it's 12 o'clock now, we could probably take a break, go to the restroom, get lunch set up and then come back maybe at 12:30 and continue presenting or 12:15, what would work best for council. I want to provide the opportunity for a break.
12:30, 12:40.
You mean for lunch?
Or eat now?
I don't.
Yeah, I'd say we break, get the food and then start back.
Oh, so we're just going to have a working lunch?
Well, or.
That's fine. I got a baseball game this afternoon, so I mean, I have, you know.
I just thinking you were going to have a guess, I was just.
That guess is currently texting me. That is correct. Well, but it sounds like we probably need to work through this lunch as opposed to just sitting around talking and.
Okay, that's kind of, I was thinking maybe we take a quick break, grab the food and have a, we continue on.
Can we do 12:30?
12:30?
So break now until 12:30?
Well, how much longer is all this part going to take?
I have 30 slides, but.
What number are we on?
We're on 81. We, I'm going to strategize with Adam on our next move.
30 more slides on water and sewer?
We can progress quickly. No, not on water, just.
Oh, I was like, what else is there?
We'll work through, we'll work through the rest of it pretty quick. But wanted to provide the opportunity for the break.
I need a break.
Okay. 12:30?
Yeah. Gotcha. But well, like we'll see now and then, we're not working on anything.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Go fight, team win, let's go.
Welcome back everybody. So wrapping up the water sewer fund and after strategizing, a concision with Brian here, we're just going to leave the capital project tables at, we've provided you capital project tables. They go through FY32, they total $292 million. If you've got questions, they're listed, let us know. But that is the, that's what's driving the rates and causing the rate covenant to be our indicator. Another item that we're just going to gloss over here, we have a rate philosophy that governs our rate structure. We are going to review that with Stan Tech, who is going to be our new rate covenant financial advisor for the water and sewer system. You know, this is our current philosophy. We may revise it. If we do, we will seek your input and your feedback on that. And then finally, the school of government has a dashboard available that analyzes all the water and sewer utilities in the state. And I think they also do some other states now, but we've compared ourselves to the other largest utilities in the state. I think out of, I think we're just short of the list of 10. I think we're the 11th largest water utility in the state. So here's some school of government analysis on our utility. If you want to find this, it is the UNC School of Government Environmental Finance Center. You can find it on the interwebs.
So just draw attention to this a little bit, a little bit more and particularly for our news media that's online, you know, even with, you know, looking at the rate increases, if you look at a bill comparison for 3,000 gallons of water, we're still very much competitive and on the low end of our competitors and our peers. I think that's important and you can see that, you know, we are, I'll look at the bottom left there, the cost recovery, it's important. We've still, you know, got to be mindful of our rates. We've still got a little bit of work to do there. You want to be in the green zone, cost recovery is you're generating enough revenue to make improvements, but we don't want to overburden our customers too fast, but just with the cost of everything. So we're, we're by no means on the high end of any of these dials here. It just shows that we're very competitive with our peers across the state for the size of utility. So I think that's important for, to draw that. And again, that information is public and on the UNC School of Government's webpage.
Adam, can you go back one slide?
Yes sir.
I don't know if you know the answer. The bottom right one there, when they make that comparison or the median affordability, I'm looking up here, so obviously we have two sets of rates, but they're just using $19.43 as the number they're using, right?
Yes sir.
Got it, okay.
Yep, so that's the inside city residential customer that they're analyzing on the water bill.
Uh huh, got it.
And then this slide is if that customer also had sewer.
Uh huh.
Yes. And then just to back up John's point, one item, the cost recovery, we actually hit one, the school of government's calculation was slightly different. So we hit one on the cost recovery. We are very affordable and just to put a bow on everything related to this dashboard, you know, the rate consultants are recommending that our costs increase, that's to meet the capital. We feel confident that we're going to continue being an affordable utility moving forward. As the 11th largest utility in the state with our affordability indicator where it's at, we feel comfortable and we'd like to continue being an affordable utility. Finally, we have an Excel file available for the what-if questions. What if my rates do this? You know, what would my bill look like? What if I use this many gallons of water if I have this connection size? Whatever questions you all might have, we're happy to help analyze and provide that bill data to you. So we've got just a few images from that pulled up on the slides. This would be an outside city residential customer, this would be an inside city commercial customer on a two inch meter. You can see that in the current year in FY22, they'd be paying $182 a month for 15,000 gallons of water and sewer, excuse me. And next year, due to the rate increases, they would be paying 203.73. So you can see the rate increases are also included on this slide.
Well, they're goes, I hear the, I see the, oh, there it is, to the left, 182.42, got it. Thank you.
Hop over to the residential 3,000 again, Adam, so we can see that.
Inside or?
Yeah, inside.
Yep, so here's a residential inside. So you can see the rates are going to have an 11.7% increase from FY22 to FY23. That's a $5 difference per month. Outside city, again, keeping with that rate differential recommendation, they're going to have a lower increase, but an increase nonetheless, and their bill is going to go from 64.76 for water and sewer service to 71.26. And that wraps up the water sewer fund, so just two funds left y'all, the stormwater and ESF. So hitting on the stormwater, bottom line, there's no rate increase, put that in big bold letters as well. Our stormwater fees are the primary revenue source here. We do have a little bit of miscellaneous income, but most of our stormwater revenue is generated off that $5 charge that you all heard presentations from Mike Huffman on. So no change there going, no change to the rate going from FY22 to FY23. However, the revenues are going to decrease 113,000 and that's due to the removal of the stormwater charge for any customers that we have in the ETK. So we felt that that was the responsible thing to do as a stormwater utility, so we removed that stormwater charge for any folks outside the city limits and the extraterritorial The total expenditures for the water, or stormwater, excuse me, fund are increasing 147.734 from FY22 adopted to FY23 recommended or adjusted, whichever vocabulary you want to use. The majority of that increase is in personnel and it looks like I've got the wrong financial summaries at the top, yep. But that's a 51.8% increase, again, due to the pay-in class study and also the addition of three full-time positions that Brian mentioned as part of Public Works. They'll be supervised out of Public Works and paid out of stormwater because they will be doing stormwater related work. And it looks like we've got the expenditures pulled up here, so that's good. The operating budget for the stormwater fund will increase, again, mostly, you know, market based factors. The stormwater fund is going to take responsibility for half of the brush and leaf grinding contract that the city does each year. They are going to do a $40,000 asset inventory phase two and get a $50,000 CCTV survey, watershed planning and a water quality grant match in FY23. On the capital side, there's a $175,000 decrease, but the $310,000 recommended budget does include an excavator for the crew that we mentioned, flood sensor system, which we also feel is going to help our first responders when certain areas of town happen to flood. We've got some stormwater improvements to city projects. A good example of this is the Fire Station 1 project, some stormwater easement acquisition, solar park, stream restoration and a vehicle replacement.
Adam, I'll draw attention to that flood sensor program. Mike's looking to put flood gauges in Mud Creek and Wash Creek and places like that so that, you know, particularly on the south side of town, we can maybe predict when we're going to need to close streets a little better, a little, be a little more proactive and notify, you know, the public, you know, that it appears that we've had this much rain and this is what's going to so, trying to be a little more proactive. There has been a committee of public safety folks along with stormwater, looking to be more proactive in that area, so.
And I would mention on the city website is a stormwater story map that details all of these projects with pictures and locations. So if you're interested, you can find that on the web.
And I'll draw attention to the Sullivan Park stream restoration. I know many of you or some of you have gotten complaints about, we have lots of evasive species along the stream there in Sullivan Park and that when we have our district or our council conversations, that comes up on a regular basis with those streams. And so the idea here is that we would try to remove as many, as much of that evasive species there and try to control it and improve the water quality there, so.
Looking at the stormwater funds debt service, in FY23, there will be a budgeted $21,067 increase. That is for a half payment on the new stormwater truck, a half payment on the new excavator. And beginning in FY23, we will also have a full payment on the portion of a brush truck that was split with the environmental services fund that we will begin paying debt on. So Q and A, stormwater, feeling good?
Yeah, no, with regard to stormwater, I know we originally began this, the goal was to build up capital to do projects, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have any major stormwater, or I guess at what point do we begin this big projects? Or maybe there are no big projects in the future, well, there have to be, I guess.
Yeah, so Mike is working kind of in, we had a good presentation at the business advisory council on this. He's working kind of in a methodical approach. However, he does have design beginning on those Wash Creek projects. So those were like six million, a couple of $6 million projects in the Wash Creek area that he is starting. Those would be the first probably major projects you see. And then other areas are now having that same assessment done to determine which project should be started and prioritized.
As far as funding those projects moving forward, is the idea that we will have to increase the fund that we charge, like the $5 fee?
Yeah, that's probably yet to be determined. Eventually you'll need more revenues, but right now, if we took debt out, we could find a way to fund certain debt for some of these projects right now.
Okay.
And Mike has been a rock star at acquiring grant revenue, so a lot of the projects for the stormwater fund are very eligible for grant revenue and we're going to continue exploring that option as well.
Thank you.
And the final enterprise fund is the environmental services fund where we take care of all of our waste in the city. So again, no rate increases. We talked about the environmental service fund last year and took some measures to change the rates to what we felt was a more competitive level that also enabled us to do a little bit more service, help our service levels in the ESF. So there was a $31,000 increase in ESF fee revenue budgeted for FY23, so that is mostly due to forecasted customer account growth. Again, no rate change there, so that's a 2.1% increase. And that ESF fee is 99% of the revenues for the fund, so it includes residential and the few commercial accounts we have revenue coming in from. The FY22 and FY23 rates, most customers on the residential side are paying $20 for a 32 gallon container and $22 a month for a 96 gallon container. So that is where we did some work. So, that is where we did some work with the rates going in FY22. So, we had previously offered a discount for customers who were on the recycling program. We felt like, because that was an increased level of service, it's $20 or $22 regardless of whether you have recycling or not. In future years, we plan to do a route and efficiency study, so that was mentioned earlier in this presentation. We are going to continue looking at a franchise agreement option where we partner with a private service provider and provide them the right to be the only private service provider for commercial waste management in the city limits, and we're just expecting some additional customers as long, from a residential and a commercial side.
Can you explain the benefit of doing that?
Of the franchise agreement? So, the, I think the easiest way to explain it is that if you choose a single provider, it's easier to identify where problems are originating as far as external service providers are in the city limits. So, you know, right now, you might get a finger-pointing situation where, you know, somebody says Firm A caused this spillage out onto the road, and some people say it's Firm B, and you can never really point source, identify who's causing waste management issues. There's also the potential to generate a bit of revenue off a franchise agreement.
And we're allowed to do that?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
And that would benefit only that fund?
Correct. Yep.
Plus, you would only have one company going around the city, not multiple?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor or Mike?
But we can, but we can basically limit those, if somebody wants to use Firm A, we say no, Firm B is the one that operates in the city. We can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, those revenue factors that we're going to continue exploring, consider, just getting into the expenditure side a little bit, there is a $261,000 decrease from '22 adopted to '23 adjusted. There is a $90,000 increase in personnel, again, pay-in-class. There's also some changes to salary splits, and that's to help balance this fund out, and it's also more representative of the work our employees are doing. So, you can see that in FY22, the current year, 96% of our environmental services workers are getting paid out of the Environmental Services Fund with a little bit of money coming from the general fund. In FY23, because of the work they do with special events and things of that nature in the Main Street districts, we felt it was reasonable to split an additional 6% out, 5% to Main Street, and 1% of those salaries to Seventh Avenue. On the operating side, got a little sarcasm thrown in here. There's an $11,000 decrease. We moved the Environmental Sustainability Board out to the general fund just because they were doing projects that we felt were more general in nature and less waste removal-related. And we also moved out a $15,000 health and wellness contribution to the general fund to help stabilize the funds, fund balance. So, on the operating side also, just thanks, economy, you're doing great. Tipping fees are increasing, $30,000. We've programmed in a $10,000 increase to fuel, to get the waste trucks around to where they need to go, and also have an increase to the brush-and-leaf contract. So, right now, that's $35,000. In total, it's going to $82,000, and then it's getting split 50/50 with the stormwater fund. So, there's some fun budgetary jujitsu going on there.
On the recycling side, I don't know the answer, obviously. When we take recycling, we don't pay a tipping fee for recycling, do we? Or do we?
No.
Okay, so.
We don't keep up all the recycling for it.
Okay.
Yep.
And I guess the payment for them is they get the recycling, and if there's a market for selling it, they get to sell it.
So, Councilman Smith answered, since Tom doesn't have an email, a microphone, let me answer his question, so. So, Councilman Smith asked, do we pay a tipping fee on recycling for the public? No, we do not pay a fee. That comes off, the idea is it comes off the weight that is charged by the haulers for the county and the city, so there's no charge. It is just a contract with a recycling company to take it, and then they sell that on the open market.
And just transitioning into the capital, so, we've built in a $360,000 decrease. We bought a budget, we bought a garbage truck in FY22. That purchase is not going to be recurring in FY23, so that's a $260,000 portion of the decrease, and we are also not funding another portion of another brush truck in FY23, so that's the other portion. The one capital purchase in the fund budgeted for FY23 is a $20,000 refuse body pickup, so just a truck to get some general pickup work done. And then finally, debt service, we have a $19,150 increase, and that's for the brush truck and the garbage truck that we mentioned above in the capital section. Q and A on environmental services. I think that's all I've got.
All right, wrapping up, we are almost done. We showed this last year, wanted to show it again. Just to summarize, an inside-city customer, what the expected change of all rate changes would be for that person, right? The theme was no, except for water and sewer, so a resident would be paying about $5.20 more per month based on this proposed budget, a business about $19.15. Just want to highlight really quick that we do have a new project management chart Essentially, anyone can go here and see the status of a project based on our current estimates, green being construction, blue being design, light blue being evaluation.
On the website, is that going to be under Water and Sewer Department, or is there a place?
It's under budget and it's under projects.
Under budget and under project.
Two places, so you can go in and you can click on the Dogwood Parking Deck, and it'll show you the total cost under where it's located, and you can go to the link on the website for the project, and so all of that's available for the public's use.
So, under budget and then under projects?
Correct. And just closing it out, John, do you want to speak a little bit just about this budget and where it meets council priorities and values of where we're going?
Yeah, just touch on the fact that Brian hit the, your priorities as we started today, and just some examples of what we're doing and things I mentioned about sustainability that our team is really trying to grab, grab hold of, and some examples are, you know, solar panels on Fire Station 1, which was part of the design. Also, we've talked about the bio, bio solids dryer. Adam Stewart, we presented that project to you at the last council meeting, and we're going to submit that to SRF Fund, but then Adam came back to us, because based on the size of the building that that bio solids dryer is going to have to live in, was able to show putting solar panels on the roof, that even at the end of the, at the end of the day, 50% of the energy that will be needed to run the bio solids dryer will be able to come from solar.
Yes.
So, in some cases, it would be a little better, but in the worst case, it's 50%. And some, in future years, after we pay it off, we'll, we'll gain there. So, also, we're going to put some, a small set of solar panels on Edwards Park, and also looking for play opportunities at City Hall and Ops to put them in the park a lot. And it's going to be, the buildings were not constructed for solar, but we're looking for opportunities where we could put them in the park. So, it's some sustainability, things like that. Sustainable rate setting, you saw that in our water and sewer fees as it relates to, particularly on the commercial and industrial, getting to that flat rate that you're paying for what you use, and not getting that discount because we still have the cost regardless, so I think that's important. Other goals, you had a strong emphasis on employees, so we did that this year with the minimum wage and benefits. Working on public safety, increasing, we talked about traffic control, things you're doing with the fire department. We continue to work hard on economic development contributions and then starting to pay some dividends. Our service excellence program is going strong, and we're celebrating 175 years. So, I think, I hope, you know, I hope you agree, and I hope that you'll see that we're meeting your goals, your priorities, and that as we go through that in the future, just as we've done in the past, that we'll be able to build budgets around those information that you give us and the goals. And so, I think it's important that we're not doing this in a vacuum, and the public sees that, you know, your ideas, your priorities get put into place through the budgeting process. So, hopefully, we're meeting what you want us to do, and I think Adam and Brian are working really hard on this budget, and so we feel pretty good about it, and we know we've got a few tweaks here, and we'll do that and get it to you so that we can continue discussion over the next 35 days or so, moving toward the June 5th date.
John, the one last thing I will mention.
What's happening, June 5th?
June 2nd is budget adoption. June 2nd, sorry. You're good. One last thing to mention before we close out is we do have the special appropriations. We've received them from the majority of you, I believe, if not all, and there has been some requests to look into our policy. Kind of what our direction would be is we go back, do some research, and come back at the May workshop potentially, if it's possible, with a discussion on special appropriations and what policy changes we need to make rather than go through those today. That would be our request, if John is good with that.
Do we want to say what the request, that we want to, we want, I mean, so, just so the public understands, there's an increase to raise the value, is that where?
There's a, there's a request to raise the value from the baseline $100,000 to a percentage of expenditures, and there's also a request to break out the spending into different categories like health and human services, first, culture and recreation, arts, and things like that. So, there's some research I think we need, needs to be done on what other municipalities and governments are doing to be brought back so we can then have a conversation about what those levels are.
Okay. I mean.
So, I have a question then on the first one that you suggested, and that is, so, if we think that we should be allocating more money to special appropriations, is this the time to say that to you?
Yeah.
Okay, I do.
Yes.
So, I think, I'm pretty sure, and I apologize, I don't remember, I think in '09, when I started, I want to say it was $75,000, and at some point, it moved to $100, but I don't remember exactly when.
For a while, it was just fluid. It was just whatever we approved, and then the recommendation was to set a certain amount.
Well, no, I mean, for.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly.
Since I've been on there, there's always been like a number, and we were working within a number. And so, my reason for wanting to increase the amount is our population has gone up quite a bit, I mean, percentage-wise, since I first started on council, and our budget has gone up considerably, and so I just think that that budget should also go up as well. And I also was the one that recommended, or not recommend, but at least suggested that if they had a percentage of the budget, every overall budget, that that, how that would work with the budget number crunchers, as a way to know what it would be every year. As the budget increases, it increases by a small, whatever that percentage is.
Yeah, I definitely think some way that we can put a number on it in the budget is helpful.
Yes, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, that when we get to this meeting, we know we need to allocate so much, so much for special appropriations. A couple of things, just as a reminder, if not, she's going to kick me under the table. You know, it's got to be, money goes to public purpose, like we're contracting for.
Program.
Program for service that we're eligible, the cities are eligible to spend money on, so it's got to do that. Also, there's a new law that, and I'm not sure, I know the mayor asked everybody, any potential conflict of interest, if anybody's own a nonprofit board, you have to disclose that, and you would not be able to vote or participate in any discussion. This is a new state law associated with that nonprofit. So, as part of this process, we'll have to identify all the nonprofit boards people may be in, be on, and we will most likely vote on this separately. If there are folks who will vote on it separately so that it's not just included into the budget. It is a misdemeanor now, I think, if you violate that ordinance, that's new.
The lump sum would be in the budget.
Yeah.
You just want everybody to be able to vote on the budget, which is why you would split that vote out separately.
So, just.
And that's if you're on a board of that organization.
Officer or board member of a nonprofit that is proposed to receive city funding, and Angela has, the mayor sent an email out to everybody.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Angela has already, in SharePoint Chart, if you're interested, or if you need to update that with her, that would be great.
The key is not just you dislike them, it is you have to be on the board or be an officer.
That's correct.
So, absolutely can, will be prepared at the May workshop meeting to have that discussion.
Can we assume, Angie, that if that organization is on our list in front of us, that you agree that they fall within what we can give money to?
I have not reviewed those yet.
Well, may I request that you look at those?
Sure.
And if there's something that's a red flag, I would love for you to let us know because I don't think otherwise, I'm really going to understand that law enough to know whether it's within that purview or not.
Glad to.
Like, thanks, Jerry, something else to do.
I welcome the opportunity to do that, seriously.
Did you, okay, okay, good.
Same conversation.
Other than that, that is all we have for today.
Well, I'll ask, you asked for breaking it out, different types of organizations. Do you want some feedback on like how much would go to each?
I think that's what we'd be seeking at the workshop.
The workshop, okay.
Bring a proposal.
It's a day.
No, bring a proposal, we'll bring a proposal of what we've seen other organizations do.
You can tell them about my discussion or my concerns, but basically, I just, you know, we're spending public money, and I think my preference is that the public money goes to benefit health and human services of some sort, or at least the predominant amount does, you know, feeding, clothing, sheltering, animals, you know, I think that those are civically-minded things to do, and I think that, I hate special appropriations every year. I hate doing that because it seems like, like if a council member has a specific kind of like place for, you know, an organization, they dump all, you know, lots of their stuff there, or, and I wish there was a more uniform way of us figuring out a priority for the council as a whole of the taxpayers that we're representing and their money to benefit the community. So, that's, I would just like to make sure we do that in some way.
Yeah, one of my things I think we should be funding are those groups that really support the services we perform, like Safe Light provides services to our police department. They have someplace to suggest people to go. So, things that maybe we would have to do, the nonprofits are doing, so we should be supporting them. That's one of my priorities, yeah.
Well, I'd like to also add, I mean, I agree, but, you know, I will say this, traditionally, if you look at least at American societies, if cultural or arts groups don't get stuff from the government, they just, it doesn't pay for it, but that seed money is very beneficial for them to even exist.
Mm-hmm.
And I agree that they may not be providing a service that we would otherwise be doing, but I also, I mean, I guess I also want to say that, but without some support from us, they may not even exist. That's maybe too strong of a term, but.
And, yeah, and some of that adds to the economic development and vitality as well.
Right.
Yeah, there are just a lot of.
But having a set balance, I can totally agree that we need to come to a balance of where we're going to allocate.
Well, and I feel like then you're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. When I'm looking at an arts organization and a health and human services organization like Safe Light, and I'm having to choose between the two of those things. like Safe Light, and I'm having to choose between the two of those things, to me, they're equally important, because it's about the culture and the economic development and the quality of life that we're providing for our residents, which includes arts and education and whatever else we would put in that bucket. So, I just think that it's better when we're not trying to put those two against each other, they're different buckets.
I look at it exactly the opposite. When I see Safe Light up against, you know, something else, I think about, you know, helping the people who cannot advocate for themselves, and that, to me, is always going to be a priority.
Yeah.
Over anything else.
I mean, I also find that there's other buckets of money that Health and Human Services can pull from, too. Like, they have more access, because most people would view it higher. I'm not saying it's not higher, I'm just saying that it, it's hard for me to just say.
Which is in the independent sector, right? Like, the private, not necessarily the public's section, but like, the private industry or the, you know, the philanthropy in our community, I think, is what drives a lot of that, and we have a lot of that in this community. But we also have a ton of nonprofits, and it's, I mean, I don't know how many more we have this year than we did last year.
So many.
But it starts to become like daunting when you're looking at almost like a duplication of.
Yep.
Of services.
That's definitely this year's.
And then are you, then are you, like, because you're spreading things so thin, then are you not actually creating a common goal?
Right.
Because there's so many duplications of things.
Right.
So, that's kind of.
Making the biggest impact.
I would just like to have some analysis so that we can better spend our money, and I do appreciate the arts and.
Yeah, but I would agree with you that, since I've been on council, that aspect of the budget is always the biggest heartburn, even though it's such a tiny percentage of the overall. But I'm with you. I totally understand, because you could spend $20 million on a nice, pretty new sewer line.
Not as nice of "I hate it," but.
Yeah, no, but you're correct. We could spend $25 million on a water intake, nobody cares. But you guys didn't give any money to this this year, and all of a sudden, somebody will say something to you about it, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yep. Thank you.
That's really good input, and we'll bring you back a proposal.
I think that's all we have.
Wow.
Awesome.
I'm going to take you up on that.
Wait, are we done, done?
Yes.
Wow. What?